I clicked on something. I'm echoing. And I, what did you click? It was on my Adobe, but it's not there because I clicked it.
I see it, I'll probably know, but now.
Yeah, and I, see, I did it on this document.
I'm hearing the echo.
Yeah, there is an echo. It didn't mean.
I muted on my side, but it's.
But I've muted on like. Oh, maybe it's not the other.
That's a little while ago, not all but random stuff. At least I hope it's the stuff that.
I muted on both.
Was from a couple of weeks ago or not.
I'm not muted somewhere. Here, I can just.
Okay, here in the user's second.
No, it's not coming through.
Talking to that again, oh yeah, so it's figured out here.
Here.
That's correct.
I put microphone. Oh, there it is.
Yeah, perfect, okay. And we are good then. We're here together.
Thank you.
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 We have a team party there one day.
It's a compound.
It's a compound. It's a compound.
That's what I thought.
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 Well, we had a team party there one day.
It's a compound.
It's a compound.
That's a compound. There it was.
And it's also a demonstration of why I'm, I mean.
Hey, well, thank you guys for being here. Welcome. My name is Mayor Mike Wickers. Today is Tuesday, December 6, 2022, and this is this Cottonwood Heights City Council work session. So we'll begin like always with the review of our business meeting agenda. And I have asked. Councilmember Burrell, she did this on the pledge tonight, will have a citizen comment period after that. And then we have five acting items that we'll consider as a council this evening. First is going to be consideration of ordinance 389, which is adopting an annual meeting schedule for 2023. This is actually something that's required by Utah Code that a public body do. Tim, anything you wanted to add?
That is exactly right. It's required, we need to do it prior to the beginning of next year, and that's why it's on here.
Great. Next will be a consideration of resolution 2022-55 concerning gondola option B. By this resolution, the council will express its opposition to UDOT's preference for gondola alternative B, which proposed staging pursuant to the recently issued Little Cottonwood Canyon EIS. Tim, you want to speak about it? I actually probably haven't even speak about it in the business meeting.
Yeah, so you remember a couple of months ago, we had been talking as a council, communicating about this document, and came to a consensus on it, and it was submitted in your packet, and then it was pulled from the packet. It's the exact same documents, the resolution that we had at that point. In addition to that, we submitted our public comments in writing, which we went through as well, to UDOT as part of this process. But this is that same document that we had discussed, and it's placed on the agenda now.
Right. Any questions, comments, anybody? Great. Item 4.3 tonight will be consideration of resolution 2022-61, which is approving a consulting agreement with NFP Corporate Services. And this is the. Actually, I was like, Tim, talk about this.
Yeah, so during our budget process last year, we had had conversations specifically in some of the work session meetings about compensation, cost of living, and other elements. And in those conversations, as well as in the Compensation and Benefits Committee, there was discussion about moving forward this next year on compensation study to evaluate where we're at in the market. It's been 40 years since we did our last one, and so we feel like it's timely. And we have funding in the budget already for this type of contract. It's a little over 15,000, and we're recommending approval of the contract to move forward with the compensation. It's in preparation of our budget processes that we're going to go through after the first of the year into June.
This is something that the council does, or that the council for every four, five years, and that sounds better, right?
We, yeah, we've done that, at least since I've been here that amount of time, and I think we've done it other times. We have had other compensation reviews since the four years on police issues because of the changes in the market for the curve that we haven't done a comprehensive one in four years.
Is this the time at which we elect, if there's any discussion? A question I would have, curious if the internal order of police is able to share data with the city. I'm just looking at the price tag of $15,000 and wondering, you know, my general understanding when we came through the budget process and related to the compensation was that we were concerned that the officers, you know, you know, will be paying appropriately, et cetera. And so as I was contemplating all this, I was just curious if it's, you know, necessary to do, you know, a comprehensive that includes all the departments? Or does the paternal order of police, you know, maybe cheat rules? So I don't know, but they would share, you know, data on what the, since really we're competing with other police departments within Salt Lake Valley, really, right? Would I, am I safe to kind of assume that? Is there, is there any possibility that they would be willing to provide data related to compensation and this sort, you know, the kind of metrics, maybe not as complicated as the one you're?
And this is what they gather, they will go to those sources and gather this, this group. If we enter into a contract with them, they'll do the evaluation of job descriptions as well as the data and the market comparisons with other cities, and which will include police.
Yeah, no, I understand that that's what they'll do. I just wondered if, you know, you know, there's a way to, you know, attack this, you know, that maybe when it carries this kind of price tag of a $15,000, you know, expense to the city.
So if I'm not mistaken, I don't, I think the contract doesn't allow you to do that, does it? Or am I wrong? Well, I think cities are.
As far as pull out certain portions?
Well, no, sharing it with other cities, or for example, you know, the FOP does one, and then sharing it with other, and maybe I'm wrong.
They, they can share, yeah, their cities do share that information. But this would be really doing a deeper dive into looking at job descriptions and comparables, making sure jobs, job descriptions are comparable with what is being compared. And so it's comprehensive in that I think the documentation and the data we'll get is very accurate, and that's why we're recommending going with this group.
So, Tim, I have a question. Last year, I know that we looked at this, what, in a more informal way, through just phone calls to all the cities. Didn't we do that with, I know the council was, it was nine years since it was, you know, since it was revisited, I guess.
Yeah, all we did last year is look at what the cost of living and merit adjustments were. So just those comparisons. This, this we haven't done in four years where we really looked at job descriptions, looked at pay and see where we're at in compensation. And so it's a comprehensive study similar to what we did four years ago in 2019. We did a very comprehensive analysis as well, but it's been four years since we've done that. And we're just hoping to make sure we're in market and.
You're saying it's been four years since we did the internal one?
Yeah.
So we didn't hire an outside firm?
We hired, we paid, we had about $20,000 for an intern that did all the data work for us, and we did it internally.
So how inclusive is this? Is this from police through all employees, everyone?
All employees.
So it's inclusive of everyone?
Yes, okay.
And is that, you know, typical for cities of our size that something like this is done every, you know, or even is this like a best practices, or I, you know, I'm just not?
In my experience, yes. Cities look at this, not every city, maybe not every city, but in my experience, they evaluated every roughly four years to see where we're at in market, making sure we're fair in our conversation as well.
Yes. You certainly don't have to, the risk you run if you get too far behind, or you get behind in one place or another is employees go elsewhere and you lose institutional knowledge or the ability to do something or whatever. They also, I mean, they're, it has been said in there that they are a little bit of a self-hickling prophecy a bit in that it's everybody kind of bounces up and it's in the middle and wherever they're at. It kind of self-rises the bar, but I don't think that it. We. Part of this contract is to compare like-minded or like things in the private sector as well. It's not strictly a public sector only, is it?
It has components of that, but the majority is our comparison with the public sector.
Well, which make, but I mean, we have, we have other jobs that equate over to a private sector, and so long some of that data gets added in there, then.
Yeah, it does include some of that.
Then you at least keep yourselves competitive. When we've been in a three-year process with what we're doing this, it kind of got sped up or hijacked a couple of times in the process because for the 50 cents an hour that we were below on our drivers twice, we were losing people we couldn't hire them at all. And so we had to kind of jump those ahead and get those in there. Were we able to keep, because those drivers were getting hired out by the construction. I mean, it was, it was really hard just to keep them in there. And at 15, that's a fairly, seems like that's actually a fairly reasonable cost if they give us the data.
Yeah.
When do we receive that data? How long does that take if we go through?
There, there's a schedule that they have in the contract, but we'll have it well before, well before we have to move forward in the budget process. Yeah, the, the schedule is attached, and it's actually, they'll have a lot of it done. I mean, they, depending on if we approve, you approve the contract tonight, they'll have a lot of it done by the first of February, and that will give us time to be moving forward in the budget process, so.
Right. Thank you. Next to. Thank you. Next tonight will be consideration of resolution twenty-two dash sixty-two, consenting to reappointments to the Conwood Heights Historic Committee, and I'll let Tim talk about that again.
Yeah, so these are, uh, reappointments for three-year terms, Jim Kitch's, uh, Jessica De Spain and Jerry Christensen. These three are doing a great job. Jim chairs the committee, and his background just in archives is amazing, and so it's great to have him there. Uh, Jerry Christensen is, as he says, is a compulsive documenter. It's great to have that that element here. Jessica also brings so much. She's a, a lifetime resident, went to the schools here, and so they are great individuals to have on the committee, and I'm recommending approval of this reappointment of all three.
Great.
Well, I'm going to make a comment right before we vote on the resolution, so I'll, I, I just am so impressed with everybody on that historic committee. And, and Jim Peaches is just a rock star, you know, you know, the committee.
Yeah, I know Gary, Gary pretty well, and he's, uh, is maybe as knowledgeable as anybody in our city about everything that's going on, so.
Look at his bio.
Yeah, well. Well, wonderful. So, um, thank you. Next, uh, on, so, uh, um, we were only gonna discuss that in the work session. Councilor Burrell, did you want to, to have us?
Oh, I thought we were gonna vote on it.
We're gonna vote on it. We won't discuss it again.
No, I just, you know how you say, are there any comments?
Okay.
Because I'd just like to acknowledge, uh, uh, for the record, uh, during the business meeting, how highly I think of all these individuals who are being reappointed, as well as the whole committee. It's just, it was remarkable.
Great, okay, perfect, thank you. And then last will be consideration of resolution twenty-two dash sixty-three, accepting requests for defense and indemnity. And, uh, Shane is here, so Tim, you wanna?
Address that, yeah. So we, we put the information in your packet, and you've seen these requests before for indemnification. This relates to the lawsuit, um, between Natalie Bruce and the city and Chief Russo. And what has happened recently is, uh, she hired additional counsel and asked the court to amend her claim to include, um, assertions related to the August second um, incident related, related to the civil disturbance. The court allowed for that, and she amended it and brought in three additional people. Includes Officer Taylor, Lieutenant Bartlett, and myself as a city manager. So the three individuals have requested indemnification. It's allowed under state code. You have to consider that, of course, an important part of this. It's, it's defined in the Immunity Act, and there's a reservation of rights, um, in this, uh, resolution as well, making sure that as we go through this lawsuit, that if there are any actions that were not part of the functions, normal functions of what we do as individuals working for the city, that there is a reservation of rights, but we're recommending approval of this indemnification.
Great. If I understand, pre- exclamation of the statute, it says that we shall grant the indemnification, so it's not a maybe if, if you were operating within the dumpster, the city is obligated to have that, but you need, need the resolution to.
We wouldn't have employees if we didn't do that, you know?
Yeah.
So, great.
Any other question? We have had a man out on one of these in the past, which.
Yeah, they, they have to hold up their end of the bargain, but, yeah.
Thank you. And then the last item will be the approval of the contact calendar, with the reminder that that includes both the, the work session and business meetings for the first of November and the fifteenth. Okay, so item three on our work session agenda, we're, we're excited to have, uh, Scott, now, hopefully I pronounced this right, Keth Burton?
That's correct.
Okay, who, who is the deputy director from Port? Did we just call it the Point?
Called the Point.
The Point. So the, the, this is in regards to the development at the point of the mountain that, uh, is being, uh, um, begun. So yes, why don't you come up, Scott?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna share with you all.
So even to, to lend a little more credence, Scott is a Conwood Heights resident, so.
And he has a new neighbor, Councilwoman Ellen Burrell.
Found out. Ordinants. No worries there, but, well, let me just. It's got beat up pinto in the corner over there. Well, well, thank you all for the time, and, uh, it's, it's a pleasure to be here amongst neighbors, so. Yeah, our board and our executive director, Alan Mattson, I think it's important to get out in the community and just share what's taking place at the point. You've probably heard some things here and there in the media, maybe attended a meeting, uh, maybe just kind of wondering what's, what's happened there, and we want to get out and share that, so. Uh, great to be here. Let me just, um, start off by inviting you to interrupt me, ask questions as we go through this, wanted to be just informal conversational, and hopefully uh, of value, want to talk about what this means for, um, all Utahns, really. This, this is the state's people of Utah's land, and we, we take that responsibility seriously and want to uh, be open and transparent in the process. We just be able to click. There we go. Okay. Uh, so let me just start with a brief video, and hopefully this works. This is a little promotional video that our development partners have put together. We'll see if it works. Do we have any sound here? Oh, that's.
What do you mean, share the whole screen?
So if you share this presentation, then the videos and YouTube is in here, it's not part of that presentation you shared, you have to share the whole. Just stop sharing, get share again, and then share the whole screen. Where's the screen? Share that whole screen.
That's what I did.
And pull it, try and pull it back.
Now, where is the?
Presentation. That's the one you're following. Okay, great. Let's see if it works here.
Is it maybe there that we need to take the?
No, no, I think we're good now. We're good, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Imagine a place where everything comes together. Spaces where new ideas can grow and where new communities can gather. Design that gives people the right of way, and everything is minutes from home. From elevated nature at your doorstep to the great outdoors downtown. This is where green spaces and green thinking combine for a smarter, cleaner, brighter future. This is where we reconnect. This is peak Utah living. The Point, your new adventure starts here.
Right, so contrary to what you saw at the Red Rocks there, this is at Point of the Mountain here, the Wasatch Mountains. But it is a project for everyone in the state, so that'll be our connection. Okay, I think I go back to this. Oh, that's not it. If you can help this presentation, okay.
You're sharing there. Let's go back to. Man.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Alright, so this is a, a six hundred acre site, just at Point of the Mountain there. It's where the former state prison resides. Obviously, now the new one has been constructed. Uh, we actually started demolition just last week, and a little presser uh, media event there and took the guard tower down, and we're, we're on our way. So this is a project that's been in the making fifteen plus years, as probably you know, uh, but really has started coming together in, in a concrete way. Over the past year, we've had a uh, framework plan that's been developed. It is an innovative mixed-use concept. Uh, but really forward-thinking, I think, for Utah in terms of sustainability, in terms of transportation, walkability, uh, and we think, uh, really an economic catalyst as well. So I'll talk a little bit about what makes it that way and where we are in the process. There we go. So our entity, we are a, a state, a subdivision of the state. We're set up by the legislature. Uh, we operate under the guidance of our, of a board, uh, that's co-chaired by Lieutenant Governor Henderson and Representative Larry Snow, and is made up of other legislators, mayors, uh, we have private sector expertise represented. Uh, soon, the Mayor Wilson will be joining the board. We have, uh, Commissioner Wilson Hume from U C as well and others. So they're, they're very interested in making sure this project is transparent, that it delivers on what Utahns have asked for, that it's in line with regional planning, that it considers the environment, uh, that it's innovative in its design, and then again, that it's, um, an economic generator, uh, for the state. And those are kind of outlined here. We, we went through a really robust public engagement process, uh, about a year and a half, two years worth of outreach, and we wanted to know from Utahns, this is your land, what do you want it to be? And they told us they want something that's, that's innovative, that's forward-thinking, that's walkable, those points that I mentioned before. And this is just some statistics on that outreach. So twelve thousand survey respondents, and, and what we did was take that feedback, took it to our board, we set up uh, working groups with representatives in the business community and within uh, the county and across the state to help us kind of make these more, uh, specific in terms of what the project should be, and that's actually in our statute. So, uh, we are statutorily required to deliver on these goals, uh, which we're, we're really excited about. We also recognize as a, a big responsibility. We've been getting a lot of positive press, uh, internationally even, uh, the UK Independent, uh, ran a piece on us, ran a piece on us just a month ago. Uh, Bloomberg, Trust Company and others have really picked up on, uh, this idea of being a walkable fifteen-minute city, which may be kind of obvious, um, obvious in terms of description, but it's a, it's a city that anything you need is, uh, within a fifteen-minute walk or fifteen-minute commute, uh, to reach. And that's, that's what we have with this opportunity to work from a clean canvas and to really do it right and, and from the ground up. Uh, so this is a little bit of a, sort of a representation of that fifteen-minute city. Uh, we have parks, we have trails, there's public transit that'll be here that will help to allow everybody to get around the site really quickly and easily. And this is the layout of that six hundred acre site. What you see here, running from, from west to east, uh, is the River to Range Park, and this is one of those signature features that connects the Jordan River, uh, trail system, comes across our site, and then goes over I fifteen into the Wasatch Mountains, really linking up these, uh, back network of trails together. You'll also see this, uh, sort of purple line running through here that represents, uh, at the moment, a, a B R T route. It may end up being light rail, but public transit coming from, uh, the front-runner station through the site and then connecting over into onto the east side there. We'll have a central park, I think, in, in all a hundred and sixty acres of green space on a six hundred acre site. And, yes, go ahead, uh, Councilor.
I, I, I just, uh, related to the B R T, is that the cranberry colored line?
That's right.
And, uh, that's something that, uh,
It could be about that timeline, so we're working closely with UDOT, U T A. Uh, currently, they've been asked by the legislature to, to reevaluate the mode to look at that again, to make sure that B R T is the best solution, maybe it ends up being a light rail. Uh, but that study is underway, and it probably won't be a determination on that until next year, probably. I think they're presenting some initial findings, uh, during the session, uh, but then we'll take some time to come in.
But the access to the existing front-runner line, is that well west of, in this project?
Or is that just right here? That's right. So that connects into the Draper front-runner station.
Oh, oh.
That, uh, that, the north part, upper part of that primary line.
Oh.
And so the, uh, so that ru- runner line kind of runs along this way, diagonal off the site there. No problem. So that's some of the, the transit, uh, features. There, there'll also be more in terms of mobility options. We'll get in that in a second. I mentioned this is to be a, an economic catalyst. It's also to be a place where, uh, Utah System Higher Education can help coordinate efforts around innovation, business incubation, uh, they can focus on select industry sectors, growth areas. Uh, that's one reason why Commissioner Wilson Hughes on the board. Uh, Jefferson Moss is the legislator himself, is in charge with, um, been charged with really coordinating those efforts and creating that innovation center on the site. We're really excited that. So smart city technologies, these are some of the things that, uh, communities ask for, so they want this to be a place where you have the latest technology that allows us to manage the, the area in an efficient way, in a smart way, uh, mobility. I'll dig into that more in a minute. Sustainability, we're looking at a variety of, uh, really conservation efforts here. We want to be, uh, really smart in terms of how we use water, make sure that we're being responsible in that way. Uh, we are looking at a lot of solar energy, uh. There'll be some, some guests, of course, you know, for cooking and maybe some premium uses, restaurants and so forth. Uh, but there's an appetite to be, uh, to really go electric on this. That's, that's a, a trend for really forward-thinking, uh, developments that's occurring. There's a geothermal source on site that we're also very excited about seeing if we can use, uh, potentially setting up a district energy concept. And then, uh, some design guidelines to help kind of make sure we get that, and all right, going to the smart mobility section here, it's probably worth mentioning as, um, city officials themselves, probably curious how this comes together, how this works. This is state-owned land, but it's within Draper's jurisdiction, so we work closely with the city of Draper, uh, make sure they're involved, it kind of meets their requirements and standards. But at the same time, the state has the land use authority, and they're gonna retain ownership of the land. We're gonna use a ground lease structure on, on your ground leases. That allows us to make sure that the vision gets built out, right? It's not gonna be sold off to the highest bidder. We can be patient with it. And, and Draper are great partners in working together with us. They'll provide, uh, services and and the like, and they'll be compensated, of course. We'll have the tax revenue, but we're uh, gonna have an interlocal agreement with them as well as the county, uh, to ensure that we get the right services, that people live there, um, get the benefit of, uh, of what they should. And we're not interested, the legislature's not interested in creating a, a large bureaucracy at the point. We're a very lean staff. We have some consultants, fantastic ones that help us out, uh, but we're here to help oversee the vision, and then we'll we'll go away at some point, and once this is built out. In terms of mobility, we're looking at a variety of, of solutions here. There's, uh, the proposal for an autonomous circulator that would go around the site, that would help with kind of first, last mile entry into the project. We'll have the B R T light rail system, but you'll also have this, uh, sort of supplementary circulator. Won't be autonomous at first, technology's still been worked through, but eventually it would be. Uh, we're looking at active transportation, uh, scooters, e-bikes, et cetera, car sharing, uh, mobility hubs, kind of bring all those, uh, those strategies together, and then looking at some subsidy for, for transit as well. Um, I won't go into the design guidelines, but we do have some, some parameters to help ensure that, you know, we, we get a high-quality product. What might be of interest to this group is the regional benefits. So we've had the Kim C Gardner Policy Institute work on a, an independent analysis, and they, they forecast forty-six thousand plus jobs by twenty forty-eight, uh, four point three billion dollars in annual household earnings, and then seven billion. Four point three billion dollars in annual household earnings and then seven billion in annual G D P that would be generated. Those are, those are big numbers and you know, at first it might be a bit hard to believe that, but if you break it down for what we're forecasting and what real estate experts and analysts think is doable here, we think that that's achievable. We did a side by side comparison. If we were just to sell this off and allow the private sector to come and develop it on their own. Eight, eight five hundred jobs, you know, six hundred million in annual earnings. Sort of pales in comparison to what can be done if it's, if it's built out according to our framework plan with the type of product that we want to be on the site and type of companies that we think we can attract. And then this is just a sort of linear view over time of that job creation. Where we are today, we've awarded conditional approval to work with master development partner for the first sixty or seventy acres at the center of the site. And we started demolition. We hope that early next year we'll formalize a development agreement. You'll see demolition going probably into fall of next year and then we'll start the horizontal development, maybe around twenty twenty five, twenty six, you'll start seeing some buildings come up. But that first phase alone could be a ten year project. And we think overall this is twenty twenty five plus years. The market will dictate, but that's, it's a long term project. It's, it's a marathon, not a sprint. These are some visuals, some renderings of what the current plan envisions. In terms of office, retail, entertainment, green space, this first phase really is that mixed use. Mixed use community.
Scott, I have a question. You mentioned you want it to be all electric. Did you say that?
Well, it won't be all electric, but we, we do want to be sort of predominantly electric.
And what's the, I know that electricity has to be created in some way. Where is that going to come from?
That'll come from Rocky Mountain Power. We are going to be using the grid. They have a a pretty ambitious decarbonization effort that's underway and we certainly benefit from that, but that power coming in is going to be generated from more renewable sources, but we'll have onsite solar. That'll be a part of it. We'll have heat pumps, you know, in certain buildings. We'll look at the geothermal or energy at least. So a variety of sort of alternative solutions.
What percentage of energy might come from the geothermal?
We're looking at that currently. There's, yeah, and we know there could be some challenges with that, the geothermal solution there. It's been used in the past, but the water isn't the cleanest, it can be kind of corrosive, the temperature's dipped a little bit. But if not the geothermal well itself, we, we think we can use in-ground geothermal and we have a couple of partners that are, that have done this elsewhere that are interested in coming on and trying to do that. So some further analysis is needed still.
I want to get out of one of you if you're going to talk about the number of housing units.
Great question. So you know, initially we were envisioning about seventy five hundred housing units. Obviously, you know, there's a housing shortage, the crunch, and that's top of mind for us. We think there'll be more. I think about ten thousand is what's envisioned currently. That could go up. And I guess related to that, we are looking at some, some ways that we can help kind of contribute to that, you know, affordability. You know, mitigations around that. We have some targets, I think around fifteen percent affordable. The A M I percentages we're still working through. We're also going to set up a trust fund. Now, we're partnering with Draper. They're going to be contributing some R D A funds into sort of revolving loan fund. The state is going to be contributing. We'll take some of the payments from our developer and put that into this fund and that'll be kind of self sustaining going forward. So very focused on housing. So these are again, some of the renderings. This is what the River to Range could look like coming through the center of the site. This is an arena that's that's being proposed, play three thousand seat arena to host some concerts and live performance options. And that's the overview. So a lot going on and I went through that kind of quickly, but happy to answer any other questions going like that.
What's the total acreage of the point?
Six hundred and eight acres.
I always thought the mayor would end up out of the point. Now we can do that without the stigma. I'm just kidding. Now with that, so you don't think the first infrastructure will be in place for another how many years?
Yeah. So the backbone infrastructure, which would be utilities, the primary roads, some of the power infrastructure that, that needs to be in place in about two and a half years. So we think that, you know, can go on simultaneously with some of the lateral ground preparation and some of the building work. But it's probably going to be twenty five, twenty six before you see buildings being, starting to be.
Come up out of the ground, correct?
We have time for this question, but how will it work in terms of projecting the demographics of you know, the people that will come to live there? Will there be a lot of children? How would you work with the school district to, you know, where will the schools be?
Yeah, those are really good questions. So in terms of the demographics, you know, we, we want it to be a place where everybody can come and work and live and play. Of course, some of the, the product is going to be on the higher end of the price point. But it is a place that's going to provide entertainment areas and retail areas for everybody to come to. And hopefully with public transit options, you know, to assist in that. But there will be sort of a younger demographic, we think. We want this to be a place where we're attracting companies, new companies to Utah, not just shuffling the deck and, you know, taking from elsewhere. But with that, they'll become, they'll come some younger workers and so they'll see that demographic. But hopefully it's a mix. And in terms of the second question, I guess with the school district, we're working closely with Camden School District. That with superintendent a couple of weeks back. They're really interested in possibly this K through twelve STEAM idea where, you know, there are opportunities for students to come in and, and present and even work with maybe some of the university presence that will be there and with the businesses that will be there and they can provide internship opportunities. There'll be a school there at some point, you know, not initially, but there'll be, there are plans for that on the site as well.
So you mentioned briefly, so the state will own, will lease the land, it sounds like, and keep ownership. So how, how does that, so we as far as construction and different parcels, so who will be paying for that? The state and then leasing that, or how to.
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty complex structure and we've had to look all over to find ways to do it, but got some smart consultants on it. And so the state is looking at putting in money for the backbone infrastructure. I think that's the most really financially responsible way to do it. It's the cost, most cost efficient way to do it. After that, we're going to look to the private sector to pay for sort of the intract work on the parcels and so forth. And the developer will lease those development rights from the state. And they're going to make sure they get, you know, their return on it on that ninety nine year ground lease structure, but the state at the end of the day owns the land. We get the tax benefit from it and, and that's going to be reinvested back in the community. And also some of that's going to go to the general fund. That'll help you know, all, all Utahns in that way, but also just attracting the new types of businesses. We think that's, that's going to be you know, something that we haven't seen in the state before, the types of companies that want to get and just more of the type of jobs we want to have.
Yeah, so Scott, the state is on the hook for all of the infrastructure in the ground. Is that right?
They're on the hook for the backbone infrastructure. Now, we want to get paid back, right? The developer is going to have to pay that back to us. And there's a complex formula on how all that works, but we'll get paid back with interest. You know, and then there can be other projects that come in. We, we don't want this to just go to one developer. We want there to be a level playing field, sort of balance of trade. So there are requirements for a developer to bring in other developers. And ultimately we get, and we get those revenues and ensure that we're made whole from the investment we make.
Well, Scott, this is exciting. I think this will be a fun project to follow. We, you know, I think it's even relevant to some of the things that we're looking at as a city. So thank you for coming and it was a great presentation and you know, we'd love to come back as things get more real even maybe.
Love to come back and it's good to be here and part of the community. So hopefully we interact a little more outside of the house.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, so item four. So, so we, one of the people that is with us each week that kind of sits in the background incognito is a somebody named Cassie Goff. Cassie is actually a journalist with the Conwood Heights Journal and we all get to see her, but I thought it'd be might be appropriate to have her come up and tell us a little bit about ourselves so that we can maybe get to know her a little bit better and we, we see her every week. We don't always get to talk to her a whole lot, but I thought there might be an opportunity to to have her tell us a little bit about. So come on up, Cassie.
Just over the head of the table.
You're wearing the right shirt. Thank you. This is what it's like over here. Hi guys, you guys know me, I'm Cassie Goff. I am with the City Journals. But I am a Conwood Heights native. I went to Canyonville Elementary School, Butler Middle before the new building and Brighton when it was the circle of doom. So been here for a long time. I served on the U City Council beginning in two thousand nine, I believe. Three years there, I saw Scott that you're doing the day with the legislature soon, and that was really important for me because now I'm here and I learned a lot from that. So that's very exciting. I'm glad you still did that. From Brighton, I went to a few different institutions for college. But then I ultimately ended up at U with my bachelor's degree in writing, my bachelor's degree in psychology. And then I went back for my master's degree in writer from composition and now I teach there and also it's Salt Lake Community College. So if you're calling me during the day, I'm probably with students either lecturing or addressing their concerns. So if you call me during the day, I will get back to you, but probably not going to answer in front of students. Unless you want to talk to my students, which is also fine. Yeah, let's see. For some of my graduate student education, my focus on research was for first generation students and transfer students because I am a first generation transfer student and college is hard. College is hard for those students. And so we have a really nice collaboration between Salt Lake Community College and the University of Utah with a writing scholars program. There it is. We provide some scholarships, some resources for students. So that's really cool to be a part of. City Journals, the City Journals is a community newspaper with thirteen different communities. So it's pretty cool. We're expanding, we're taking over the Davis Clipper, we're taking over a source in Idaho. So in terms of location, we have a really great reach, which is really cool. We have forty part-time writers like me. So that's really cool. You can rest assured that the articles you are seeing are passionate because we're passionate about the community and writing. So that's fun. I wanted to express appreciation to you guys for housing and paying attention to housing and having some more of those conversations. I am one of those young adults that as on a teacher salary doesn't get paid enough and can't afford a house. So I appreciate you guys worrying about that and actually listening to that experience. Any questions for me?
Anything personally you want to share? So you said, where do you live currently?
I'm currently in Sandy.
Sandy? Okay.
Renting. I would like to own a house.
I have one question.
Yeah.
During your transition from S O C C to the U, how was all transferable? Were your credits and was it an easy transition for you?
So first off, I knew I was transferring back to the U because I started there through a high school program and then came back. So I was prepped for those transfer credits and I knew what courses to take. I currently have students that don't have that transfer credit recently. So here and there. The transition was really difficult. There's a lot of information at the university where the four year students and then coming into that as someone that doesn't have those years as freshmen or they're trying to go into that community is really difficult and feel a lot, you feel that imposter syndrome quite a lot. So having resources in a community is something that we like to try and give transfer students, but it's also something we're trying to give you to do too.
Okay.
It's good to know. Cassie, we see you here a lot. How many other cities do you sit in like what you sit in here?
This is my primary one. So this is where I am weekly or bi weekly at this point, but I go in where I'm called for. So I'm one of the writers that will not necessarily have a regular be other than this one, but I'll go fill in where I need to. So depends on the month.
We're glad that you're here the most.
Me too.
What's your favorite thing about being at the journal?
Writing. I do a lot of grading when I'm sitting in the back. I can do a lot of grading too. So I like being able just to sit right for a little bit because I don't get to do that as much anymore.
Are you published in, in things outside the journal or you've done other work?
Yeah, I am. For school stuff. So I've written chapters of textbook. We have a book for the research that we're doing opportunistically and with the institutions coming out in a few months. So that's exciting. Yes.
And you said you were first first generation, is that to college or is that to the United States?
College.
So someone who, whose parents or other family members may not have gone to secondary educator.
Correct. Anything else?
Cassie, that's awesome. Thank you for sharing. We, we learned, I think, some more about you and appreciate, like Doug said, that you being here and being part of our community really. So I'm going to ask you to remind me who else, who is the mayor and who are your peers on the council, just so I could get back into the, how far along ago that was?
Nikos was my mayor.
Me, wow.
While ago. Thanks.
Thanks, Cassie.
Thanks, Cassie.
Way to represent.
So yeah. Okay, we'll move on. Item five, so the staff report. So the, so the first item that we have under five A is, is the discussion on our focus survey that's what we're being generated and focusing on. So I'll have Tim talk about it, I guess, here for a second.
Okay, so you remember the last time we had a conversation about the focus surveys, the council had given direction to really drill down into the housing elements of our community. So we've worked with Y two analytics and Kyrene in developing a draft for the council to consider. What we did is Mike Johnson and I worked with Kyrene. They started off with several housing type questions they've asked in other communities. And then we made a number of modifications to get it more fine tuned into what we would want to see. We had the draft, we sent that out to the council and there's a one, a shared drive, not drive, but a shared document that you can go into. I submitted that to you mid-November. And there's been some comments on that. I even looked at it this afternoon. What, what the survey really focuses on, and we want to make sure in this conversation here that we are hitting the things that we want to see in the survey. It will be administered not this month, we'll administer it in January because we don't want to do it during the holidays. We talked to Kyrene and it doesn't work out very well to do that. We're planning on administering it in, in January and move to that point. The, the survey provides an introduction element to, to kind of get people warmed up into the questions related to the community. There's actually one or two questions on that. And then it goes in and focuses on price and housing costs and gets input on that. And then it goes into different development and different types of housing and getting input related to the types of housing that may or may not work in our community. So we can understand what people want to see related to that. So that's in general, the, the survey, I'm not really planning on going question by question here. I would say that if you have additional input and we'd love to hear it tonight, but also you can go into that one, into that shared document and provide additional comments. I really hope we can come to a consensus and have it ready, obviously mid-December so we can get it administered, but that, that's what I wanted to present. See if there's any input.
So let me add something if I can right at the start. So I thought Scott's comments on, on some of the questions were really good. I, I, as I went through this, I, you know, I, I thought about making some comments, but I, I think I am not clear on what we are trying to accomplish. So there, there are a bunch of questions in this survey that I think are interesting. But as a city and a council specifically, what are we inclined to accomplish with this survey? What, are we just trying to get a sentiment of what people think about? I mean, there's not a whole lot that we can do about affordability, to be honest with you. I mean, we, you know, in, in future development, we can maybe play a role with, with developers and in, in trying to create um development, we can maybe play a role with with developers and in in trying to create specific AMI for a certain part of units. But I mean, so I don't know if this survey brings enough clarity for me on what we are trying to accomplish. And maybe I'm missing something, but I'd love to get your thoughts and and comments on what been created and and to my question, what's our purpose with this specific survey?
I I think that would be my number one question too is what what are you doing here and why? Uh what are we, what are the expectations we have and what will we do with any of the results and see back from the survey?
Yeah.
That's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah.
Well, well, I if I may, uh you know, I think that we, you know, saw in the general survey that we did this summer uh that you know, there's uh people mentioning they want to see more affordable housing, but the reality of talking about affordable housing is really you know, different points of uh you know, is it at eighty percent, fifty percent, thirty percent? I know we had uh you know, Mike Johnson uh shared with us, you know, where our inventory levels currently are within Cottonwood Heights. Um and uh you know, that roughly a third of our inventory uh is made up of multifamily and the other two thirds are single family. And um you know, I'm interested uh to get more feedback in in a little bit more specific uh comments, you know, related to to people's uh you know, desire uh to see people who are, let's face it, in the working class uh be able to afford to live here uh you know uh going forward. And I remember in our preliminary conversations in a council meeting several weeks ago, I believe it was Councilman Bracken and myself who particularly wanted to see a little small glossary. And maybe I think I'd like to see some, a bit of a lead in, you know, if we identify that the purpose is uh to build an awareness that with market changes in the price of homes. Uh you know, what kind of future do we want to see for this city? Do we want to see people who are workers, first responders, teachers? You know, people who who work in the local businesses, uh you know, some portion of them be able to live here. You know, and how we frame that, but I I I would like to see the survey start with kind of the reason why we ask you to be a respondent in this survey. Because of, you know, maybe list the top three or even even possibly uh say that uh our current projections show that we are, you know, needing, you know, eight hundred and thirty you know, how housing uh units uh that meet the need of people at thirty percent uh AMI and at fifty percent and at eighty percent. I mean, I don't want it to get too data heavy. But I do think at the beginning of of the survey, it would be a good thing to, you know, again, if that's one of the things that we're trying to get. Because as I went through the survey and I apologize that I wasn't uh you know, Johnny on the spot way that Councilman Bracken was, I I did not get my comments entered. Um I have excuses, but I won't mention that. But and I I did try to work in the document over the weekend and I had a little trouble entering my my comments, but I I so purpose, that's what I would like to see. And and I again would, I think it would engage more. I I know that Y two Analytics told us that with our general survey uh this earlier this year, they have trouble uh really obtaining. I think they had planned to try to get twelve hundred and they got just shy of, I think, eight hundred respondents. So um I think keeping it relatively brief, but having a a bit of a purpose and and giving a little bit of meat, a tiny glossary for some terms. You know, I thought some of the questions got into the weeds too much. Uh and again, as as you said, um our city manager, you know, we're not going to go question by question. But I do have some specific uh you know, feedback on on different aspects.
If I I appreciate the input on all this. I think when we talk about the reason for the survey, I mean, it it really hopefully connects a a lot with what we're going to talk about next, a general plan. We we have to look at a vision for the future for multiple years, decade and decades potentially. And and we have to plan for housing types and plan for what we want to see in the community. I mean, we either keep the community the way it is right now and hopefully have that, or there is going to be growth, most likely. What what is it that we're trying to understand from the residents as part of our general plan to plan for the future? I mean, that's a lot of the background of what this is about.
So I so I like that. And 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 I think that gets to the purpose to me. If we're trying to 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 find out how our residents feel about density. To me, that's a purpose. And so because we're we're in a mostly built-out city, but there there are some development opportunities. There will be more redevelopment opportunities. Consistently happen. Consistently happen, absolutely. So perhaps I love that that my my came out with the the detail that one-third of our city is currently multifamily housing. I think that's a great place to lead out. I bet you nobody knows that within our city.
We didn't know it.
We we didn't know that. So if if we led with, hey, did you know Cottonwood Heights is currently one-third multifamily housing consisting of apartments and condominiums? Do you feel that's a good composition? Do you feel that needs to be lower? Do you would you think we need more single family? Do do we need more? Anyway, does that make sense? I I don't know how what we're asking is accomplishing. And you go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, that I mean, that that's why what my my decision, let's put some of that's a piece of data that we probably should have in here leading up to that, you know, it's it's this many units compared to that many units or this many acres compared to that many acres. I think having people understand that would be good. Because if you also contrast, because the questions we're in here about do you want would you like your family to be able to live nearby? Or is it okay if they live in Paramon or Leighton or Spanish Fork or Saratoga Springs? Um those are legitimate questions and I think that's I that's kind of where we were at. You like this or you that's why I was going, let's get those comfort contracts. Say this is what it is. And if you give someone a baseline, this is this is where we are. This is what we have. Now you know, what do you want to see? Do you do you want to see? Um do you want to see us push transit and active transportation really hard? I don't think there's a, I don't remember if there's an, I mean, you know, funding source for that in here. Or are you okay with the way, are you are you basically set in your you know, your current, you you like the lifestyle that you've got and you don't want that messed with? That's hard. That might be more for the transportation. Certainly, we may be doing, but that's but it would be nice to actually ask people directly, is that is that what your goal is? Uh just to throw a little wrench in there, in lieu of doing a survey, would not a report about current state, future state and um possible projections be something to illustrate to people to say, this is where we are. This is what's, you know, we're trying to put this plan together. Some of the ideas for the future and here's some of the possibilities that may come about versus having them go through a survey and have this survey.
Yeah, I like that. And and actually, I think uh adding uh context to what you're talking about and what the state expects of us.
So they know.
So that that so that people understand, hey, that are answering this question, did you know that that we we actually have to plan for growth? And so what do you want to, how do you want us to grow? We 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 have to meet certain expectations. I think Mike's going to talk about that. Actually, the housing component that we didn't, that we had to resubmit. But uh so anyway.
You have information there and I think that's really helpful for people to be able to digest it without feeling the pressure of having to fill out a survey and then be able to have that document there when they make any comments as to what their expectations are.
Yeah. One thing that we're dealing with a little bit here is the reason some of these outlined communities are a little bit more affordable is because when my parents moved here in nineteen fifty-four, it was not considered the cool place to live. You know, I think they paid uh thirteen thousand dollars for their house. And now that same house could be five, six hundred thousand dollars. And so the the communities movement are moving out and in all the the what we saw in Y two Analytics was, yes, we think we should have housing, but we don't want it in our backyard and we don't want and that's the reason we're in Hillside situation. Every developer knows it's quick, easy money to stack people deep. And I think that no, no one, there's certain areas though, that responsible building, if it's out in certain areas, it's less impactful. And hopefully transportation will catch up to this to help us get places without some of the things we're dealing with now. But I think with the uh the ADU, I mean, you think about the short-term rentals. There's a lot of homes. It'd be interesting to find out how many homes are being used for short-term rentals because those are taken
Well, in ADUs, they're short-term rentals or both either because they are different.
I'm saying, yeah, they're different.
And I think those are very relevant questions to housing.
Yeah, because that could say, okay, will that open up, if that was not allowed, how many homes would that allow? Because I have two kids that are professionals, engineers and different things that don't think they can live in Utah alone. It's a lot cheaper to live in other states. And now because you can work remotely, you can do that, but they still like to be around where they grew up and what they know. And and so there's a lot of challenges here. And that's not even counting the ingration, migration. It's it's the families are growing and then where do those kids go? So I guess the question is from where we are with with the questions that we have is is do do we want to maybe refocus? Or do you think we're at a good enough place?
Well, I would I mean, in kind of response to what Sean said, a a report can be great, but there's also a lot of um validity and wait to having a statistically valid response from your populace saying the people said this and we've got enough confidence that we're in here that this is what they want. This is the way they perceive it. We can do a lot with education and that and that's great, but I I do see a difference between having that because a lot of people aren't going to probably go read a thing. I do see the the purpose of a survey and getting our jobs as as like officials is to go deep down into these things. Because we're basically hired to do that, to do the research and do all the deep. But um there there's a lot you can get out of a of a of a public opinion thing. Yeah, do you like that? And that's why I like some of these, but do you like this one or this one more? Most people can answer. I like the public portion of it, but most times in a survey like this are they educated on each of these issues? That's why you have to make sure your part, your questions are. When I'm concerned, even a question about it, how many people are going to take that twenty minutes to go dive deep into that and get the statistics from the city and pull it up on our website and do all those type of things? We have to feed them something so that they can be educated by the time they receive something like this to have an opinion.
Maybe maybe we try to uh uh put into our next newsletter um this type of information that then we we tell, we actually say when we try to then do a survey, hey, will you go and at least read the newsletter before taking the survey so that you are a little bit more informed about some of these questions? Because I I know what you're talking about. I think I think I think if they're not informed enough, some of the answers aren't going to be because you know, they think we can get a lot, a lot of different answers based on, even though people might want the same thing. Um and I think if the more educated they are, so I don't know, maybe that's a thought.
And and I think that that we we could definitely do that. There's a potential that we could do. We don't want it to be too much, but um an element of education, an intro is, as Councilmember Varell has talked about into the survey, say, here's the facts, here's the basic facts of what the housing components of our city is right now. We're working on a general plan. This general plan focuses on the future and what we want to see. Based on this information, please respond to the following questions on your thoughts and and maybe even do something with the the newsletters.
I like that idea.
You want additional related to this, you can refer to the newsletter as well.
I think that's great. And I think that's great. Having an opinion, everybody has an opinion. But an informed opinion is is key because let's face it, a lot of things get thrown out there by emotion. And if you don't have all the facts and that's why we get attacked sometimes because they go, why are you doing this? Because they don't have the facts that we might have. And if they had those facts, they might say, oh, I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, interesting thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, one last comment I'd like to make, uh you know, related to the survey and I and I agree that a lot of the questions were, you know, framed really nicely, but I did notice that uh you know, uh instead of ever coming out and saying transit oriented development, and I know we don't have light rail that, you know, comes through Cottonwood Heights. But I would, I would actually like to see it talk about, you know, transit oriented development. People might never have thought about that. You know, I don't know what percentage of people in our city have never even ridden a public bus. Uh and 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 a lot of people do have a very negative perception toward that. But the reality is that our businesses are going to thrive when they have workers who are able to get and and mobility is only getting more expensive. You know, to own a hall, to own a car and drive everywhere you go. So I think that we have to accept our urbanization and and present it in a positive way. Because I noticed in the survey, the closest, it was like, would you like multifamily where the, I think it said where there's traffic? Something about kind of like, oh yeah, we'll stick multifamily where it's heavy traffic, you know, I whereas, you know, I think to start thinking about transit uh and not as kind of an afterthought and we hope we get better transit. But you know, as we come up with our general plan update and our five-year transportation plan, what is the kind of viable transit through Cottonwood Heights that would allow workers to come here? For instance, from Midvale, like what I see in my mind very clearly is that Fort Union Boulevard can be not only, you know, a wonderful place if we had more vibrant transit along Fort Union over to the new you know, gravel pit developments. Uh but also extended all the way to the tracks uh station uh there to the west. And that could infuse people that live in Midvale, which has a lower price point to live there to be the kind of workers that would be able to easily come and and work within the businesses uh that are located throughout.
That's a good question. You say viable transportation on Fort Union. What do you mean by viable?
I mean, so right now our bus has come once every thirty minutes. Okay, and and uh you have to really want to ride the bus and have a lot of extra time because if you've ever ridden it to go anywhere to work or you'll find that by the time you transfer, it's very clunky. I mean, I I I I talk a lot with my constituents.
And I I don't do it anymore, but for a number of years I took the bus right at Bella Vista all the way to Kearns without a transfer.
And I
and that's why I asked a question because I'm like, wait a minute, I I've taken this bus.
It's it's actually the 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 local bus transportation on the east side of Salt Lake Valley has actually diminished over the years.
But it was only three or four of us even then, you know, just on the bus. And that's 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 why I'm I'm. It is.
They're like you're a limousine.
Talking about uh Councilman Noel is uh to be viable, it needs to be frequent. Uh and it needs to be uh preferably inexpensive. You know, uh UTA needs to really look at offering very inexpensive monthly passes for people that fall within a certain uh you know, uh earnings category. Uh you know, there there's there's, we don't you know, we we had a real surge at the turn of the millennium and with the two thousand two Olympics and we had some real vision and some real uh you know, we were recognized nationally for our transit development up until about twenty ten or a little beyond that. And uh the local lines have have been uh uh diminished uh throughout. You know, you can go all the way up uh north of, you know, in the Sugar House area. And that money has been more poured into tracks and into the front runner. And while I'm all in favor of a regional uh transit, we don't have good east-west connection anymore. If you were to get on a bus in downtown Salt Lake and try and get back to Cottonwood Heights, as you come south on State Street, you would have to transfer at about, I forget what it was, thirty-nine hundred south. You'd have to get off the bus you're on and and wait for another bus that would take you into the southerly end of the valley. And now then you're going to have to transfer again on seventy-two hundred south. So we have, I I would like to see our city really work with surrounding municipalities and with UTA for some real vision for, again, viable transit out in out in the decades ahead.
Okay. I'll give backup. I just want to say your biggest hurdle was.
Your biggest hurdle is culture. And until you can change the culture of the communities around here. U T A is not gonna be able to justify it. We can't justify it, because we don't run the buses, to be able to shift any of the way to deliver their services. And that's one of the big hurdles that they're working on too, is this cultural shift. And that's gonna be a real heavy.
And that's why it takes leadership to help.
I was gonna ask a similar question, might be a little more abrupt. It's a survey comes back and a survey that says. No, we don't wanna pay extra for transfer, I'm fine being in my car, I like my suburban lifestyle. And that's what the vast majority of the people in the city. Express, then are you still going to say, no, we have, I'm going to force you to, I'm gonna congest your roads, I'm going to. Make the buses come, and I'm gonna do all this stuff to try to culturally shift you as opposed to having you choose that yourself. I, I said that very poorly, but that's kind of the. I, I mean, I said, I'm, I'm all for traffic calming, I'm all for doing all of these things, but at the same time. I am, I, I don't feel that it is our responsibility. To overly socially engineer. How and what are the people, our people decide to do.
Yeah, so, so I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do, so, so I think we're a little off topic of, of the housing focus survey, but I think it's. Thought brought up some really, really good points, and I think they're things that we need to, we can further. Talk about, and I appreciate everybody's comments, so do you have enough direction from us? Yeah, so, so this, this is what I'm hearing, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna. We're going to uh. Enhance the survey by providing more of an intro. An educational intro onto these types of issues related to housing facts, related to the general plan and why we need this information. And then um. And then have them possibly do a newsletter article as well to have them reference back to. And hopefully that will help them be more educated as they take this survey, and we'll refine the questions as well based on input that's been provided. It'll just take a little bit of time.
I would like to be able to submit my, my input and uh. Because I thought uh Councilman Brackett has some good points, and and I saw a few things that I, I would like to see tweaked, so I appreciate. Working with staff uh to, to, you know, further refine it along with everything you just described, I would support.
Yeah, so provide, provide that information, because what I'd like to do is get this back to why to, to. Rewrite, and then we'll do another shared drive for all of you.
And I promise I will.
When would you like that?
Well, I'd like to get this to them, probably within the next week. To start re- reconfiguring this, and then you'll have another opportunity to learn this.
Seemed like for some reason, that particular thing was a little bit difficult to pull up for a couple of us, and maybe.
With having this, I mean, honestly. I, I would love to be able to see what your comments are as they're going in there and be able to discuss them. You know, like.
I, I didn't, I, I had a hard time coming in, because I didn't understand what we were trying to accomplish, but, but I think this has been really good, so I think we'll all. Get involved like, like you mentioned, Scott, and and provide that this time, so, so we have, we have about twenty minutes. Now to, to go to item B under staff work, which is the general plan discussion, so we're gonna. Turn the time over to Community and Economic Development Director Mike Johnson, and uh let him lead us in this, so.
Thank you, Mayor. It's almost empty, sorry, Matt. This is a, uh, just an update from the last council discussion we had on this, probably a month and a half or two ago on. We, we kind of. After the joint work session in, in July and some follow up discussion and discussion of host, hosting town, town hall meetings. Um, you know, the direction was given to kind of slow down, let's, let's regroup here and talk about particularly how to approach land use. And and the housing elements of the general plan. Um, the direction at the time was given, hey, you know. We're gonna focus on a, you know, a context sensitive approach to future land use of, you know, what is planned or. Envision for one area of the city may not work somewhere else, and how do we? How do we provide that, you know, that context specific approach to land use, um, housing, and then how do we? Do it in a way that doesn't create a, uh, any disproportionate impact in one area of the city over another. So we have, we have done that and are, are very actively working on finishing a. A complete, a content complete draft of the general plan that we will have. Out and published and ready for review and hopefully in the next week or so, but I did wanna just give you an update and and kind of an overview of. A few things that I think will kind of get us back in the general plan mode and then lead us into. Um, how we've approached the general plan as a whole and specifically the land use and and housing elements. So this is just a, an overview of what I plan to cover in this presentation tonight. I'll go over the uh components that make up a general plan that's really quick, and then our philosophical approach to how we're, we're looking at this and how we're. We're jumping into this and addressing it. We'll review the proposed general plan goals as they're drafted right now, because those, those are uh. Those goals are important and show up in every element and every chapter, whether it's land use or housing or sustainability or transportation or anything else, it's the same goals. Just the objectives for how to achieve the goals change depending on what chapter you're looking at. And then I'll, I'll give an update on the land use element and kind of next steps. So just as a reminder, the state code requires uh some of these elements to be in any general plan, land use, housing. Uh, transportation in particular, um. All these things are not required, but, but it's good practice, and and this is um similar to the, the chapters you see in the current general plan. Um, so, so it's a very high level. Thinking, you know, years and decades into the future document. That helps a city identify a vision and where it wants to go and what it wants to accomplish in terms of all of these different elements. Um, so, so that's what you'll see here is the, the concepts and the goals and things like that are written in a very. Very general way and and high level way, but it's on purpose, because it's such a broad plan that's supposed to capture, you know, the entire vision of, of the future of the city. This is kind of the approach, the, the philosophical approach um that, that we've taken with the draft and how this has been developed so far. I think the first one's key here is we've. Throughout the years, this dates back to the original general plan and every public survey we do and any public input and and public hearing and land use application. There is a huge priority in Cottonwood Heights, rightfully so, to um to preserve and and protect and enhance the quality of life of our neighborhood. It's kind of the, the high value amenity in the city and and ensuring that, that those areas are. Um, you know, the quality of life remains high in those neighborhoods, that doesn't mean doing nothing in them, because that. You know, that has negative effects o- over the, the scope of the general plan over years, but it means um. Making plans that ensure um that you're, you're enhancing and protecting those, um, those neighborhood areas. So how we've approached this and and each of the elements found within it are kind of from that neighborhood scale. Outward, so we, we started small in, in different, you know. Areas of the city, we will plan, you know, we'll, we'll establish recommendations for land use and housing and. Transportation, all these things, and we'll work our way backwards instead of starting high level and working our way in. By doing that, that helps us achieve this kind of context. Based approach, because what works in one neighborhood may not work in others, and we wanna make sure. Um, that we're planning from that local level out, and as we move out, we make sure that the different areas we're looking at are interconnected. They, they um complement each other and that what's recommended in one area is, you know, doesn't conflict with something in another area. So that's, i- in the word neighborhood here is broad, that, that includes commercial areas, we, we're just basically breaking up the city into. Smaller areas and making recommendations that would work at that small level, but also work citywide. Uh, another a- approach here is, is maintaining. And this is a big one, this encapsulate, it's a ton of information, but maintaining and improving the safety, viability. Connectivity of all transportation methods. It, it's really i- in planning terms, what's known as a complete streets approach, where you make sure that the way your streets are designed can accommodate. Safely, any, any form of transportation, however you want to establish policy and program those streets. Uh, they're designed in a way that is safe and approachable for, for anyone using them. Um, and like I said, that, the transportation element is, is very substantial in this, and you know, that's a big topic, but. Um, it's kind of distilled into that one point. The next one hits at uh the approach to growth, you know, there's all these statistics we see out there that growth is happening, the population's increasing. The number of households is increasing, so very generally, um, this plan is recommending that, you know, the, the city plan. And develop policies to accommodate growth rather than react to it when it happens, because either way, we will feel the impacts of it and, and you know, we can either. Plan for it uh and be prepared or or react, and and when you react, you kind of. It, it skews a little more negative. Um, but, but do it in a way that is, like I said, context sensitive, so what works in one location may not work in others. And avoids creating a disproportionate impact in any one area of the city, this is the, this dates back to the joint work session where. Um, you know, there was, there was a little consensus at the end that. You know, the phrase smart growth was thrown out, and we need to, we need to plan for it in a smart. Way that's reasonable for, you know, a built out city like ours, again, what works in the, you know, the point. Subdivision, the fifteen minute city being built from the ground up might not, might not transfer here, so we need to, to keep that in mind as we do it. Um, housing, you know, planning for a variety of affordable and attainable housing options, this will get. Uh, we'll get into this more, but it, it's a critical thing and and it's a, a requirement of the, the state code that a housing element needs to be in the general plan. So um, you know, not just planning to add density for density sake or apartment projects for the sake of it, for the sake of units, but. Providing a variety of different options for people of all socioeconomic backgrounds and classes. Um, i- in all steps of life to be able to have a reasonable opportunity to, to live in the city if they want to.
And is it, that's why the, the plan came back to us, because they wanted us to update the housing?
Well.
In the general plan?
The, the, the housing plan came back to us really on, on very. Kind of tiki tech technicality things, you know, a sentence said the word uh instead of, uh, you know, it's kind of that stuff. So, so that will come to you probably. Probably either next week or in January. Um, but so, but yeah, it was some language related to the existing housing plan and making sure the. The wording in there matched the state code wording exactly instead of mostly.
Okay, plan is next week and then potential decision in January, because we have to have it done.
Right, what we're anticipating for the housing element of this general plan though, is to take that existing one from twenty nineteen and and revamp it and update it and. You know, change the, the tools that the council would like to use to implement affordable housing if that's desired. And and reassess all that and overhaul it and. Uh, the last two kind of philosophical items here of how we're approaching this is utilize recommendations from existing master plans that the city's done. Um, we've got a lot of them, you know, we've got the Parks, Fields and Open Space Master Plan, we've got master plans for Fort Union and Wasatch, we've got. Um, the transportation master plan that's being worked on, the Bottom of Shoreline Trail Access Plan, we've got all these different plans that make really good recommendations. And have been through a public process, and it's not saying some of the recommendations in them don't need to be updated and and modified a little bit. But we've got a good baseline to work from, and we're trying as much as possible to incorporate those recommendations into what you see in the general plan. And then, uh, lastfully, thoughtfully, identify key future redevelopment, development areas and ways to guide it, this, this gets at the form based code. Um, type approach, which again, gets back at where I started, uh, we can look at different areas of the city differently. What may work down the road at Hillside Plaza is, is probably different than what could work at the gravel pit, than what could work at. Of, you know, a thirteen hundred East and fourteen U Boulevard, so the context matters here and. Current city ordinances, the mixed use zone doesn't really get at context super well, and we're trying to uh enhance that this go round. So these are, and the wording is not finalized by any means, but these are the eight goals of, uh, that have been drafted for the general plan, and you will see they're, they're very broad by nature. And these goals are reiterated within each chapter, so these goals are, are pasted into the housing element, into the land use element, into transportation. Throughout the plan, and then each goal will come with a, a set of objectives, how can we achieve these goals within each element? And that, those objectives will change depending on which chapter the general plan we're in, but they're all going back to the same overarching goals. Um, so you can read through them here, but again, goal one, we hear it. Constantly preserve existing neighborhoods. Um, two is enhance local services and amenities and connect neighborhoods to them, you'll, you'll see. When you get the draft, that connectivity and inter, interconnectedness is a big part of this plan as well. Uh, provide for a variety of community and lifestyle choices, thi- this gets at the types of land uses and the types of retail opportunities and. Access to recreation and and, you know, um. Access to, you know, if you wanna drive your car somewhere, being able to do that easily, if you wanna walk or ride your bike or take transit, it, it all relates to that. Uh, transform major corridors from a land use perspective, you know, we've got our Fort Unions, our Wasatch Boulevards. This can tie into, you know, into the transportation element, into transit enhancement, uh, pedestrian improvements, things like that. Um, goal five is create vibrant walkable activity centers, including a Cottonwood Heights Town Center, which is probably the focus of that goal. And and again, has been topical since two thousand five, there, there's recommendations in the original general plan. Um, that, that strongly um recommend developing a town center that has a sense of identity. Maintain and approve the city's recreation network, critical as, as growth occurs and as, you know, population increases and. More and more people visit the city to have recreation opportunities nearby. Uh, establish policies that help protect the natural environment, this segues well into the next discussion, which is sensitive lands, and we've got a lot of that in the city and, and. Those natural hazards and the natural environment should be planned for. And then finally, plan and prepare for future growth and development in a context sensitive manner. So those, and the wording is subject to change, but that's kind of the intent of the, the overarching goals of this whole plan. Um, just an update on the land use element now, which you'll see a full draft of, that, you know, the actual chapters, twenty pages long with maps and a bunch of stuff in it. So this is very distilled down. But the priorities and how, again, how we're approaching the land use element, based on the last conversation with the council. Based on the joint work session, based on existing plans and public input and everything else. Is um, is as follows here, so the smart growth concept first, plan proactively and responsibly for growth. To limit the negative impacts and maintain a high quality of life in a way that complements established city values. It's very easy to say, and and as we dive in, it's, you know, it's trickier to do, especially in a built out city, but that's, that's one of the priorities. Support existing neighborhoods while providing a variety of new and affordable housing options for various types of individuals and households. Establish a town center area with a strong community identity. Uh, guide appropriate redevelopment of and accessibility to other smaller established centers throughout the city. To continue to meet local shopping and service needs, it's kind of an economic development concept. Um, and and that really gets to making sure that we're proactive, you know, we've got thriving commercial centers right now, especially at Highland Drive and thirteen hundreds. We want that to remain that way for as long as possible, because that's a, a huge community, um, you know, draw and amenity for residents. And making sure we're addressing that over time a- and and making sure we're. There are ways to keep those viable and successful for as long as possible. Uh, plan for a dynamic transportation system that balances vehicles, transit pedestrians and active transportation, steer complete streets goal. Uh, develop policies to accommodate shifting working and shopping patterns, the way people live and. And recreating and work and and shop is changing and 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 we ought to be on the. The proactive side of that rather than the reactive side. And then again, embracing the and protecting natural environments, views, open spaces and natural resources. Uh, and that will get at, you know, that's protecting view sheds, that's making sure you have a good sensitive lands ordinance, that's making sure you're, you know, you're. You've got good recreation opportunities in those open space areas, things like that. So I, I've kind of said this uh already, but the approach to the land use element has been to utilize. Existing and adopted master plans when possible and adjust when necessary. Uh, develop, this is a big one, develop neighborhood small area plans, this is not done in the general plan, but will be recommended by it. To go in in more detail than what you see in a general plan and say, okay, we're gonna plan this neighborhood now. And when you plan at the local scale, you can say, is there good access to. Recreation and shops and services and jobs and, you know, is it walkable, is it not? And if you do that, you know, uh, Orem City did this a, a handful of years ago and, and won an award for it, they, they took this neighborhood approach. And, and had, you know, little committees in each neighborhood that said what's important to those areas, and you can identify what's needed, what works well and, and what can transfer to other areas there. And that gets at the approach we're taking here, let's make sure what we're recommending works at the smallest scale possible and then scales outward. Um, another recommendation will be to implement develop, a development code with form based elements. To, to have a hand in shape targeted redevelopment areas, um, with a little more um. You know, control or nuance than we currently have with our, with our mixed use zoning code. And then develop small area plans, kind of like neighborhood plans for key commercial redevelopment sites, so town center, gravel pit. Maybe others in the future, you know, the corporate center and other commercial areas, which aren't as. Um, you know, as much of a priority immediately, but will still be in this plan. So with all of that, this is kind of all of that distilled into a map that goes kind of the, the land use priority. Priority areas. This map will be reformatted and, you know, it'll. Look fancy, but this is functional for where we are now. The the focus here, and this was kind of talked about at the last uh the last meeting, we discussed this at. Is going to be really these key commercial areas for for redevelopment, Fort Union Corridor. Um but you know, the the nodes there, the the major intersection areas. The corporate center, we've identified two that are a little more imminent, the the gravel pit and the town center areas. Um and then the yellow, it's kind of hard to see there, but that's your neighborhood scale center, which would um, which would get at accessibility. If you need something in a hurry and you don't want to drive all the way down to Target or, you know, you want to get on your bike and go to a, you know, go to the store quick. Um where we started on this map that for neighborhood centers and and really centers in general is. What's existing right now and making sure we can maintain those or enhance those um as as needed. It's not to say we can't add new ones and envision new ones, and that's what I would hope comes out of a, you know, district-specific town hall. Type public engagement activity. But this gets at um. Hey, this is a way that we can plan for the future and plan for growth and plan for redevelopment. While preserving largely the, you know, that character and the value of the the single-family neighborhoods and the residential areas of the city. And we think this does so in a way that, again, doesn't. Overly skew the impact of of change in any one area. Obviously, what is possible if planned right and if safe at the gravel pit is much different than what's possible at a. You know, a a little corridor redevelopment property and and that will be reflected. So that was the very quick, high-level summary. Of of kind of where we're going with this. The estimated timeline is, like I said, we we plan to have a content complete rough draft. It's not going to have all the maps or the figures and the graphics and things in it. With, I I say within two weeks here, I'm shooting for much quicker than that to have out to the council for review and and even post online at that point. And then, you know, throughout this process, we'll keep refining it and formatting it and and, you know, getting it ready uh. To take forward through the formal process. Town hall meetings, we're planning to be ready at the council's direction as early as January. Um to have those and however you want to do those, that may be a separate discussion. We had originally had a. You know, a contractor drafted up with someone to come in and moderate those. We don't have to do that, that's up to the council. But the idea there was to host, you know, four different town hall meetings with invites sent to. Every property within each district to have that district level, that that smaller level kind of planning discussion. Uh after that, there again, ongoing refinement based on what we hear at those meetings, any focus surveys, anything else that that we see in the meantime. And then we plan, you know, quarter one, twenty twenty-three, it's again, general, to introduce this to Planning Commission and then at that point. It'll be in that formal process for as long as it takes to discuss and and update and tweak and take public input. Before it comes to the city council and does the same thing. And and a tentative goal, um you know, pending all of that would be to to work towards final adoption by next fall. That's what I've got.
Could I, could I add? So before. You, we get to the complete draft to the planning commission.
Mm-hmm.
Uh I would love, as as the council looks at your work, that we maybe look at um. For example. We, I count, uh a meeting, we look at the gravel pit, maybe we look at the Fort Union Corridor one, one meeting. So that w- we don't get overwhelmed with looking at the complete graph, but maybe we say, hey, we're going to look at the the town center, how we want to go here. And and we could do multiple ones in a in a meeting, but uh so that we kind of put our fingerprints on it.
Yeah.
With you, does that make sense?
Absolutely, yeah.
Any objections?
We have one meeting before January.
Well, on the end of Q one, two third twenty twenty-three, so we've got.
This is just an estimate. This, again, this is up to you. We, you know, we we've been at it a while and want to keep.
Yeah.
You know, getting it forward, but.
One of the things I'd like to see us consider, and thank you for, this was a great overview on. Uh. Is for uh, you know, when Councilman Newell said, you know, boy, I'd like a good solid report uh. Uh you know, related to housing uh and such, and I I'd like a a good solid report on exactly what. Is the complexion of our local businesses uh within Cottonwood Heights. If if one of the things we're trying to achieve is walkability. Get people out of their cars along the Fort Union Boulevard uh segment particularly. Uh I know I had a constituent say to me, well. Would want to patronize. There's very few, da-da, he was kind of. And I thought to myself, well, do we have, you know, really an analysis of of really what we have currently? Not only along in the strip malls along Fort Union, but whatever commercial centers we have and, you know. What what would help our residents to be able to shop and do more of their shopping right here in Cottonwood Heights, spend their money here? You know, are trying to attract certain types of, you know, businesses. Oh, well, we don't have any. Making this up, you know, shoe repair and we don't have, I don't know. I mean, I I'm not advocating for big box stores. I mean, if people want to drive all the way to Costco to do their. You know, bi-monthly grocery shopping, you know, we're not going to change that. But um I think it'd be enormously helpful for the council to have, you know, a report on, you know. You know, what are the businesses by category? Where are they located? You know, so so like what is in all our strip malls and uh? And and what occupancy levels are are uh class A office space uh, you know, operating at? I know I was given a a general, you know, high occupancy level early this year. Um but I'd really like to understand, uh again, I think it'll play into how much we want to incentivize. It's it's more class A office space. You know, we know that it's been a problem at the Canyon Center. Uh finding either leases or or buyers of, you know, to build the office space that was to complete the Canyon Center project. Um so. Again, I I'd like to see a a report that, you know, is is more thorough in that.
And tip- typically in the economic development section of that, there's, there's background and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, there's background that should have. Fairly updated data that will help us understand that mix and where we're at with some of those elements.
Yeah, but like where are they located? You know, like the flow, again, I think that that mobility and transportation and the flow. Is so integral to the future of our city. Uh so that we can create what we are finding, you know, from the Y two A survey this past summer that people do want. They want what connective rock ability and actually related to transit. Uh there were two categories. It was how li- you know, are you likely or somewhat likely to use transit if it was more available and such? And and it was, it was over fifty percent that that. Either we're somewhat likely or really wanted it. So I I do have feel that we have surveyed and are.
I I read, I read, I don't, I don't see it as a. Mandate. For that end, um but that's. Um but you know, some of those exact questions that you're asking are. The actual data, but in the and the questions in the in the serve, the focus survey were specifically. Do you think we have enough of this? Do you think we have enough of that, which is a public perception of what they're going to use and where they're going to use it? If they, if every, if we've got seventy-five percent of the people say we don't have enough. Shoe repair places. Then that would certainly be, but that's uh, I mean, there's, there's one thing to, this is what we've got. That we can say, or we can know that we have. Thirty percent of our housing units are multifamily. But if that's not the perception or that's not the way people are going to behave, then. I mean, then then there's a disconnect.
I I think, so you got that, Dirk, Mike?
We, yeah, yeah. We have some of the information, we've got leakage studies of. You know, what types of industry are people generally leaving Cottonwood Heights to do? We have a. A rough snapshot of how that's changed after the pandemic. We had some pandemic relief money that we. Designs made did a study for us that showed that. Um so so, you know, we have some baseline data to show some of that information, which, you know, we can.
I would love it if you would. Port it our way.
So we're going to move, we're going to move on, we're going to keep Mike in the hot seat and and we're going to move through items, see which the sensitive lands evaluation. The ordinance update specific to their to repairing, so we're excited to, we pushed this off a couple of times, Mike, so.
Yeah.
You're here and let's, let's do it.
All right. So we have, we have now in gotten through the the various elements of the proposed sensitive lands ordinance amendment. In the last handful of council meetings. The last one is um. The riparian protection area recommended um regulations that that again, fall within sleds. It's it's a component of sensitive lands. Some, some. Um you know, some members of the public. At times thought it was a a separate, presented differently because this was a little newer um rather than just an update, but. It is all within that sleds umbrella, it's all part of the same ordinance, so um I just want to keep that in mind. Just some background, uh just, just, we'll start at kind of uh ground zero here. A riparian protection area. The the goal of it is to institute standards for what is uh allowed or or. What procedure is required when developing along waterways, open waterways and their adjacent ground. And and those waterways and the adjacent ground are known as riparian areas. What do the standards um intend to do? They protect water quality, they minimize flood hazards, destructors. They preserve habitat and aesthetic values in certain areas. They stabilize banks and reduce erosion. And they allow for groundwater recharge um, which is i- is key to, you know, stormwater collection and and retention. So a little background here, riparian protection standards are already included. As a, in a, an identified natural hazard in the current sensitive lands ordinance. However, the place where it references those standards existing does not exist and and I've never been able to find out why. Uh the discrepancy is being addressed as part of the overall sleds update by including proposed right parent protection standards within the ordinance. So it is listed today as as a hazard that should be regulated. It just, the standards don't exist. So we're, you know, we've, we've proposed language to um to remedy that. Uh and we can get into that more as we move on here.
For clarity's sake. Is it only a natural waterway and does?
It's it's open waterways.
So.
Open water.
Now would qualify for it. It does have to be open to the.
Open, open water.
Piped, right?
Correct, yeah. Uh a- again, the concept here very generally is the area closest to waterway being most regular, focuses on guiding new development. New development to be harmonious with sensitive waterway areas inconsistency with other sensitive lands hazards and procedures. The concept's not a whole lot different than. Uh steep slope regulation and fault regulation, the closer you are to those hazards, the more restrictive you are. And the more study you need to do to justify that, that you can develop close by it. Farther away from those hazards you get. Uh you know, the less regulation and there's no regulation. So the the concept is the same, it's just a different type of hazard. How this has been drafted is is by establishing buffer areas. Um so certain um buffer zones, distances from the waterway. Um you know, like zero to twenty-five feet is one zone, twenty-five to fifty feet is another, fifty to seventy-five is another, and the. The the standard changes as you move uh into those lower zones. But following the introduction of the buffer area system to the planning commission, planning commission actually requested that staff widen it to include more property within its protection. Because originally we were proposing the same buffer zone for all zones in the city for, no matter where you were, no matter what waterway it was, it all just applied the same. Planning commission said, hey, take a look at that if we can increase that, especially that that. Most sensitive zone is closest to the open waterway, you know, come back with some recommendations there. So we did. Um we found, based on that direction from the commission, that properties in zones that require larger lot sizes. Could accommodate a widened buffer area, but properties in zones with smaller lots, so your R one A type properties. Uh probably couldn't because by that point, extending it too far, you were encumbering a lot of the lot with regulations that. We didn't think actually helped at that point. The idea, though, is in a, on a larger property, you could have larger development that could be closer to the creek and it would impact it more. So that's the rough concept. But I did want to clarify that. The widening of that and the differentiation of the the zones was done at the recommendation of the commission.
Um. And you mean the wider buffer area that's not necessarily more restrictive?
Yeah, well, I'll show you. I'll I'll get into it in the next slide, but we have two groups now, uh two different buffer areas um and and how we're measuring those. The regulations are the same, the labels are the same. It's just the the dimension of the buffer area. So we have our larger lot, our forestry zones and our rural residential zones. Where your minimum lot size is much bigger. You, you have a lot more land, there is a potential for for more development in those areas. And then you have your smaller lot zones, your your typical single-family zones and, you know, most of the zones in the city fall within that. Notably, cur- regional commercial does fit into group one there. So this is, th- this is a comparison of the two. Um I guess zones that have been recommended. The first one here, which is the the areas where the minimum lot sizes are much larger. Area A, the real, really the only difference is area A, which is most. The area most close to the top of the bank is wider. It's fifty feet in group one and it's twenty-five feet in in group two, the smaller sized zones. Uh where we started and everything was was this, and it's been kind of bifurcated now.
Mike, the big question is, what is restricted?
Yeah.
On those, that's, that's.
Understood.
Part of this.
We're going there.
Okay. And the creek, just so you'll know, the creek, usually that property line goes to the middle of the creek, is that right?
It it does in certain areas and and others, it's, it's not. And, you know, in a little cottonwood, some of those established neighborhoods. It's common for the property line to go in the creek, but it's, it's not consistent across the city, but.
But they've been told by the county that it's their responsibility halfway to the middle of the creek.
Yeah, that's likely. I will note the county's regulations, county flood control regulations always begin at top of the bank. Um you know, we send developments near creeks for them to review their restrictions. Not maintenance or or upkeep obligations, but development restrictions always begin from the top of the bank, very similar to what we're doing here.
That bank line, by the way, changes.
It does. We have a definition for it.
Hey, real quick, so.
Yeah.
You've mentioned new construction a couple of times, so does that mean we're grandfathering in any?
A lot of it is, yes. A a vast majority of activity that already exists will, is fully.
Have we evaluated it at all? All of these, I mean, if we, I mean, anyway, have we gone up and down? Most of these repairing areas and and looked at what's there?
So we've, we've, we're still doing a mapping, a GIS analysis of. Properties located along waterways and then drawing these buffers and seeing, seeing what's in each buffer zone. What you're most commonly going to find in this area A is like accessory buildings. Chads, pools, sport courts, things like that. Um. You know, especially in in this smaller lot-sized zone, you're you're dealing with setback there anyways, where your your house probably isn't going to be too far into that area. Totally, there are areas where where there are decks and patios and, you know, things like that, even in some points overhanging the creek and, you know, that stuff exists. Uh but but we're not saying if you have something there, you can't have it anymore.
Along, may I ask, along these lines, there were some residents that were, you know, very concerned. Uh I think this was a couple of months ago and. They were quite vocal. Did they get their questions answered, their needs met or?
I have met uh multiple times with with a lot of those residents, you know, for hours total and and have. Some of their recommendations were fair and I think matched the intention of the ordinance, but we have, copy the ordinance you have, takes into account. A a lot of the concerns that I heard. I'm not going to claim that we've addressed all our concerns and they're happy now, but but we have made an effort to address a lot of.
Well, I guess, I guess I got confused because, you know, if this is about new building. Then why are the residents who have, I mean, I know they they, what they said to me was, well, you know, the creek, uh the 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 route of the creek. Changes over time with erosion and the and all this and that and, you know, they were very. Up in arms over, you know. What are we, are we going to have to come to the city every time we need to, whatever, cut down a tree or plant a fixer? And.
Fair question.
But it seems like they wouldn't need to because sleds is really focused on new, like, construction of a new housing, not. What an individual. What an individual homeowner is going to do anywhere near the creek or my misunderstanding.
No, that is the intention and we've added clarifying language to, to try to, to really make that point clear and, and I'll go through kind of the table. In a minute, so you can see that.
Is that what made most of them feel okay?
Uh, again, I don't want to, I don't want to say they're all okay with it. I think there are still concerns. I think there are concerns that we're adding regulations at all and that's out there. Uh, again, our approach is it's not new. It's referenced in the ordinance already. We're just trying to get it in there because. The way we read the ordinance is it's supposed to be there and it's just missing. Um. But I, I do know it, it has alleviated a lot of the concerns that I think have been. That made its way to you like, hey, this ordinance won't even let us fix the sprinkler line or, or dig a little hole. That's, that's not the case. That never was the intention and it's certainly very clear that that's not the case.
It was missed, a lot of misinformation, I think. Unless, unless there's something in there that I haven't seen.
So, so how this has developed is we've, we've identified a table of uses and it's, you know, but. A couple dozen different types of uses that, that. Even have the potential to be regulated here. If the use is not listed, it's not regulated. Um, and they're broken into by. Proximity to the creek. Is that activity allowed? Is it allowed with analysis, which means you can do it. There's just uh, some level of review that the, the city's DRC wants to look at. Or in certain cases, would it not be allowed? So I, um. Let me jump. These are just examples. I'm going to jump now just to the table so we can go through.
You had to get, to get, have to have a repairant, I mean. Everything gone through an engineer is what they were also concerned about. Or simple things that normally they would do.
So I, I'll just work through this. I, I probably won't touch on all of these, but you can see the A here means it's just allowed. You don't have to come to the city. You don't have to submit a review, you know, any application or permit or anything. Maintenance of any use or structure lawfully established prior to the adoption of this ordinance is just allowed. Um, we think this covers a lot of the concerns that, that we've heard from, from some people of, hey. You know, are you taking away rights on my property? You're, you're limiting what I can do there. We're saying here. It's allowed i- if it's there already and it was established legally, even if it's a structure right on the edge of the bank. If you built that legally. You can have it there. You can maintain it. You can use it. Um. Even expansion and replacement of, of legal non-conforming structures. You'll see there are notes here. This means they're allowed. They just have to follow certain protocols. This one references. We have a process in the city anywhere you are, because we have a lot of houses that don't need setback. They were built decades ago and they don't meet today's setbacks. And we have a process in our code for, for people that want to add on or, or expand those houses that don't need setback. It's the same process here. So it's same exact thing. Um, he- here's one of the, the restrictions, uh, you know, new primary structures, a brand new building, uh, and, and not a shed, not a. You know, an accessory building, but a new home or a new commercial business or whatever else. Um, this is where this ordinance is recommending and this is a, a, all of this is up for discussion and, and further. Research by staff. Um, not allowed in those first two buffer areas. Um, because.
Your seventy-five foot setback in some of the larger lots down on Creek, correct? If someone's coming in and asking for a new house.
Right. Um. Very, brand new development is the most intensive on land. Um, so, so that's, you know, this is one of the few. Um, uses in this table that would not be allowed. Uh, allowed, you know, just going through the standard permitting process uh, in those other areas further away from the creek. This is going to layer a little bit on top of existing regulations from a, you know, a regulatory agency like a FEMA or a Salt Lake County Flood Control. Our ordinance is not meaning to take precedent over theirs. It would just apply in addition to if there's conflicting. Um. Things then, you know, we have language for how to deal with that. Uh, new impermeable accessory structures. So that's, you know, something that's hardscape that doesn't allow. Uh, drainage into the ground and, and, and retention into the ground. Uh. Again, proposed to not be allowed in that most immediate area next to the creek bank, but allowed elsewhere. Again, with some notes, most of these have to do with how do you landscape the area between the structure and the top of the bank. Uh, but permeable accessory structures. So if you've got, you know, a, a, a paver patio or a, a deck that allows drainage, you know, and, and discharge into the ground. Those, those things are still allowed, uh, even in that most sensitive area. Let me just kind of go through these quickly. Um, stairs, landscape walls and paths. Are allowed everywhere in that most sensitive area. We are asking to review that before it goes in. Um, you know, especially if you're cutting into the bank to add stairways down, you know, some, some homes have those stairs down to lower. Creep side patios. We think it's, it's reasonable to just make sure those are designed well. And safe when you're, when you're disturbing that sensitive area. Uh, livestock habitats, pens or other enclosures. We're, we're recommending those be allowed everywhere except that most immediate area. Uh, any activity constituting development or a ground disturbance activity. Unless otherwise stated in this ordinance. So if you're developing in a way that's not specifically covered here, we're, we're saying it's allowed. And there are just a few provisions we want. We don't have to see, but we, we want to be followed, mostly relating again to landscaping. And I will remind the council that there is a landscaping ordinance already in the city that's adopted. So any new development or construction has to follow that already. It's, it's not anything. You know, vastly different than what's already required through that typical permit process. Uh, ground disturbing activities such as the. Topographic regrading of land, not including minimal grading. Minimal grading is defined. It's like, you know, grading that changes the elevation. By less than eighteen inches or two feet or something. That's your little maintenance holes, you're, you know. Move and dirt around. We don't, we don't care about that. We actually even allow ground disturbance beyond that, which could be substantial grading activity. Even in area A closest to the creek, we do want to see a grading plan when it's closest to the creek. Otherwise, it's, it's just allowed following other.
The minimal grading have a square footage?
I will, I, we have a definition. Let me, let me just pull it up here.
Is that where sprinklers would fall?
Uh, yeah, that might be somewhere else in here as well, but we have um, thoroughly addressed.
And a trench would, that, that's what has where trench would be different than if you're gonna um, lower everything eighteen.
Minimal grading, it's um, anything that doesn't change the elevation by more than a foot is minimal. And then beyond that, we're saying, yeah, it's still allowed three D and three E there. Just the way this works. Is uh, I can just go to that.
So there's not like, you have to keep it under a hundred square feet or something like that?
No.
Okay.
And digging a hole that to recover it for sprinkler, I mean that.
But, but that also falls into that top category of maintenance of what you have there. Um, a- a- and, you know, the DRC does not want to. Frankly, waste time looking at people changing their sprinklers out. It's not, it's not the intention.
Well, I mean, I just, you know, it was a foot deep, but it was three hundred square feet. That.
Now, sensitive lands does have grading, grading permit requirements outside of the riparian standard. If you're doing substantial site grading. It's, it's over an acre, I think. Um, it needs a, a, a stormwater permit and it needs uh, a grading plan reviewed by the DRC. That's, that's anywhere insensible.
Do they not want water on a non-permeable surface to go into the creek? Is that the, the reason that they've got that?
Yeah, I think the idea is closest to those areas, you want as much, as much um, recharge as possible. It's groundwater source protection, which we do have a, a separate ordinance for.
We may also want to keep some of the. Dirt, oil, breeze, grime.
Yeah, you've got pollutants and things like that and.
Out of the, going to the creek, yeah. But which by the way, they empty Utah lake water into our creek in our city and it is completely fouled the creek side beds. It's terrible. Right down by Union Park. It, it, it's so definite. It goes from this beautiful crisp, pristine water to this gunky. Utah lake.
I know the canal brings the lake from there, but.
This is coming from Utah.
Water rise thing is the whole.
To the creek or into the canal?
No, it goes into our creek. And they showed us that when we went on a little uh, tour.
You can see three D and three E, those little caveat notes appear a lot. So that's just how you can do these things. Um, if it says AR, you, you come show the DRC and, and review it and you're okay. Um, but area A, three D says just area A must be covered with at least fifty percent landscaping. Uh, and then three E is, hey, if you're using heavy equipment in that area, minimize the use of big heavy machinery as much as you can. Doesn't say you can't use it, just, you know. Try not to use it.
Don't shake up the whole, yeah, big.
Um, th- this is one, uh, you know, I think there's some resident groups that, that may disagree with this next one, but, but use of herbicide, pesticide or fertilizers. Or other toxic substance, except for those related to tree health, which are applied professionally. You know, this ordinance is recommending not allowing that closest to that water source. You know, we don't want to see those.
Are there none of those that would be approved for discharge into the storm drain or?
We could look into that. Certainly we could look at expanding that, but where it is now is, hey, if you've got, you know, we don't want you spraying these chemicals very close to that, that.
So if you fertilize your lawn, would that be a violation?
Technically how it's written now. Again, this is all open to discussion. It's allowed everywhere else. And even in that area A, if you're having trees sprayed and protected, we want trees to stay healthy. If it's a product applied professionally. Um, you, you can do that. There's, there's not even a requirement to come in and, and get approval to do that. You can just have that done.
That, that one seems like that might be something where you could maybe do the AR or. It's, if, if, if it's something that's okay for the river, the, whoever, whoever, you know, the county or whoever says. No, that one we don't care about, then I.
I'll reel it into that. That's fair. A- and I would even say it's not even an AR at that point, because I just. Hey, make sure it's an approved, uh, you know, substance. This is, this enforcement, enforcement of this is going to be, you know, challenging either way. We're just trying to reiterate. Hey, we don't want a lot of dangerous chemicals applied right next to the, the water sources. Installation of trees or plants are allowed. Um, there are some, some recommendations for how trees are installed. Again, minimizing the use of heavy machinery when possible. Uh, and then. New plants and trees must be non-invasive as defined by Salt Lake County's invasive species list. Which we, we think is a, a fair thing to ask for there. We want those trees to be healthy and, you know, not cause further hazards over time. Uh, maintenance.
Transportation area to get their seats and stuff down.
Yeah. Uh, maintenance and tree printing is allowed. Again, three E is minimizing heavy machinery.
Without an arborist?
Allowed everywhere. Just, yep, just allowed. Removal of trees, uh, plants, and then it, the next one goes on to the next page, but it's basically debris. Is again, is allowed. There are some, some things we ask um, be followed. Which is the landscaping requirement, the heavy machinery. Um, and then. Basically, if you've got. Says with the exception of unintended tree starts, which you can just take out. Trees which are removed must be hazardous, which means they're, they're causing some sort of. Um.
About the flow.
They're dead, they're partly dead, they're causing damage. You know, there's, there's a reason they're being removed. What we don't want to see is you have, uh, you know, a bunch of healthy trees and you just. Go clear them out, because that, that harms bank stability and, and things like that. Um, and then. It, we, we say any hazardous tree that is removed should be replaced with, with trees planted in the same vicinity. Um, and then um. You know, certain caliber requirements to make sure they, they're hardy enough to, to hold. But again, you can, you can go remove trees. He, we ask that those standards be followed. You don't have to come in and, and get approval for that. We, we do say three I there. Um, does say in determining whether to remove. Uh, this is not an, uh, an arborist thing. Woody debris property owner should consider its benefits.
We're about ten minutes left. Is that all right?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I'll, I'll be done very soon. I just want to get through this table. So you see, these are the uses we're talking about. And, you know, because I know that, that you've all been hearing.
They seem a lot more reasonable than what the perception was initially.
Yeah. Again, I, you may hear different opinions. I don't want to mislead you at, at all, but this, I'm just going through and reading and you've got the ordinance.
No, thi- these seem very reasonable, but you're, you're right. There are some people who. Any perceived new regulation is going to be wrong regardless of what the intention is, just because why are you suddenly now. Restricting what I can do. But, but I mean, I also see the purpose for these. I think they're.
Seem practical rather than overstepping that, you know.
Uh, fencing's allowed everywhere. Three, three J is a new one that just says, don't, don't block water flow if you're installing a fence. Uh, composting areas, we're saying, don't, you know, don't put your compost bin close to the waterway. Uh, low impact stream crossing, which I didn't find the definition for.
We have some of that Crestwood Park where they, the trail goes across them. It's uh. Think it's mainly for the horses.
It's a walkway which does not impede the flow of water in the stream channel during a period of high water flow.
Our horse has nice shoes that don't wet.
What's that?
Our horses have nice shoes.
Obviously that doesn't, that's not applicable in most of them. It's even louder. We're allowing it just with, uh, you know, with approval by the DRC. Same thing with installation of new flood control devices. Uh, we're allowing those things. We just, there's a review process to, to review that before they go in. Installation of new erosion control devices, same thing. Uh, trails, um, we are saying are allowed in that immediate sensitive area. Um, we, we just minimize the use of machinery and make sure it's properly landscaped. And the parking lots, you, because this does apply to commercial areas as well, not allowed within those first two zones away from the riparian areas. Uh, that, that seems like an obvious one. You don't want cars and.
The county has a lot of that creek on the north side of Little Cotton Creek in my district.
Yeah. Um, I do want to clarify a few more things that we heard and then I'll be done and, and open it up for questions. Um. One is in the applicability section. I'm just going to read it here. It says this ordinance does not apply to functions by regulatory agencies. Which are conducted as part of their necessary operations. So if a utility company or a flood control company needs to get in and do work. Or, you know, anything like that, this ordinance doesn't apply. We're not, there was some concern that we were regulating the regulatory agencies and that's never been the intention. That's hopefully clarified now. A regulatory agency can, can do their thing. Um, I think. I think I'll stop there. Again, you've got the, the draft ordinance. This is posted online. Uh, it has been for, for a month or, or two now. So it's out there for public consumption and I will just state, I'm happy to meet with. Any residents that you're hearing from. Uh, I've done it already. The offer is, is open to anybody. Having a meeting with each of you to talk through this in more detail if you have questions you don't think of tonight.
Right. Well, Mike, we appreciate all the work you've done. I know this has been extensive and you've taken, you know. Multiple phone calls and met with multiple people and, and I know. Like you said, people are wary of, of new regulation, but sometimes it's necessary and thank you. Appreciate all your hard work.
Kind line, are you looking?
But my plan would be if you have any feedback, you know, we can bring this back. Whenever, I would say at this point, January, uh, with the full ordinance, I have some recommended updates. I know the mayor met with, with some residents on some. Just procedural clarifications elsewhere in the ordinance relating to the DRC. Uh, tho- those are reasonable. So I'm going to get those changes made. Along with any other council feedback I have between now and then, and then you'll have a complete updated draft. Next time this comes, we, we'll plan probably to just schedule public comment. Uh, January, next time, whenever this is ready to be considered.
Yes.
So we tentatively, um, just on our council log, we were going to have additional time next week's meeting. If you need additional time. To have any more input. So that was, that was our plan. If you're wanting that.
What I'd like to do is talk to some of the residents that have concerns and have them watch this. And then maybe go over some more of this. Uh, just, I think Mike has helped alleviate some of that. Anxiety because when somebody especially is pretty vocal about it and then they gather a group. They'd sometimes put their own narrative into the worst case scenario.
Yeah.
And things become extreme. You know what I mean? Like.
Yeah.
You can't go there and, and, and pick up an acorn off of your property, you know. But, but there are some, there's always fear when things get, you, you don't want too much uh, overreach.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate um, all of that. So if, if this is on next week, I won't have any new information for you. It'll just be. You and I. If you, if you have questions ahead of time, let me know and I can prepare for them. My only one otherwise, that one, whether it should be a. LA fertilizer. Yeah, I'll look into that.
And I'll talk to some of the residents that are concerned.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
The next item on our, our staff report is D. It's a um. Labeled as the Bengal Boulevard speed limit adjustment discussion. Let me give you a little bit of background. I've been. Really concerned about the speed coming up uh, Bengal from Highland towards Brighton High School. We have a, a crosswalk that, that goes from Butler Hill to drive over to the school. Um, it gets used actually quite often. Um, that we see people on it all the time, morning, night. Um, we, we, we are in the um. Process of making some changes lighting wise. I think we're going to make it safer. Um, Matt is actually looking at some different options from coming up um, to, to a. Uh, visually and manually have to, have to slow down. But I asked the question, i- if we could make an adjustment to the speed. Um, it's currently thirty-five miles an hour. That would require an ordinance change due to the type of road it is. And so I, I wanted to bring it in, in front of you guys, you all. To a, to, to, a- and Matt, is there anything that I, you want to add to that, that be, to, to discuss on? Whether we think that proposing a new speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour coming up that. Whether we think that proposing a new speed limit of twenty five miles per hour coming up that road. Um, with some signs, you know, radar signs to, 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 to get people to slow down before they hit that first crosswalk at, uh.
No, the, the proposal, just real quick, uh, Shane, just as far as the ordinance is concerned, Shane's proposed. To Tim and I like three different ordinances and it doesn't require a public hearing. There's, but we can bring it back pretty quick next week if that's what you want to do. Um, but right now, on this road, I can't drop it below thirty five.
Right.
Um, now, as far as the engineering is concerned, there is, I, I, I won't say I'm majorly concerned. But. I feel like this location does justify a reduction in speed limit. But once again. Clarifying, a speed limit sign is not really. Going to slow down traffic.
Right.
People will continue to drive at their. Comfort level, okay? But it could be a very gentle reminder with the flashing radar signs coming up the hill. Hey, you've got the school zone ahead. Um, I mean, you've got a speed, this is your speed, slow it down, right? Right now, the speed limit in here, this is the roundabout, it's not showing in here, but the speed limit from this location roughly. To down here in front of City Hall is twenty miles an hour already. It's a regulatory speed. If you look at the signs out here. It's twenty miles an hour through there and that's for the speed of the roundabout. So it is slowed down already in that location. I am, like I said, if we're going to do this, we, I, I would say we need to look. At least down to the skate park or to the athletic complex where the students do walk. Um, every day, um. In the summer, I mean, and. When they go down for their tennis or whatever they're doing down there, uh, a place to slow down and through here, this location. We have a school zone. It's twenty miles an hour already during school times. So we have the flashing yellow. School zone sign, um. This area, it, it's a high school. It's very unusual to have that at a high school, but at some point in the past, someone designated. This area as a school zone. And state code says if you have a, you can designate a secondary school, seven, eight, nine. If you will, but if you're going to do that, you have to have the flashing yellow signs to do that. You can't just designate it and not have that. So this is regulated by those. So those are the things that are involved here. Um, we are looking at other options for traffic. Um, and we're trying to tie those in with the project at Bengal Boulevard as well as the trail project. You know, doing some traffic calming with, through that. Those projects which are going, I'm sorry.
The trail project?
Yeah, we have the federal project. If you'll remember, we have. Uh, along Bengal Boulevard, we have this federal project. The intersections. So looking at combining and trying to do some traffic calming with those two projects. I don't know yet exactly what we're talking about, but. That's where we are and you've already talked about the lighting at the intersection. Um, I mean, at the, at the crosswalk, um, we're working on that. They should start work on that next week for the following. Boring and whatnot. So this is where we are and this is what we have. So if you'd like us to bring it back or you want to have this discussion on the speed limit. That's, uh, I'll leave it up to you.
So it's like we said, and the mayor said, it's an ordinance change. We bring back a, a, a proposed ordinance change next week to allow us to reduce the speed.
Well, I guess. What ordinance is that? Is that, why, why, why is it there?
It's in our municipal code eleven point one six.
And do we know where it come from?
It came from the county. It's a holdover from the county, which a lot of our ordinances are. They're holdovers. And it discusses the, uh, thirty five miles an hour on roads other than. Neighborhood or residential, designated residential roads.
Matt, do we know, number one is where would you start that at? Because I just tested myself. I tried to forget. That I was driving up that hill going east. I was in the thirty plus mile an hour range. We've got a famous twenty five mile an hour range. I teach the chief about on thirty of these. Trying to go up that hill at twenty five, I. I'll bet there's probably half of one percent that actually go twenty five up that because we do have a couple of residences. Where would you start that? That flashing lights, you know, or whatever, where would you start that? After the crest of the hill? Or before you start up that incline?
I think through this zone, if you will, right here as you're starting to climb. Well, one of the concerns we have is, it, the uphill doesn't concern me as mu- so much as the downhill. Um, if reducing speeds, I mean, it's hard to remember to ride your brake, if you will, to make that. Twenty five miles an hour the whole way.
Oh, there's a few people who do.
Yeah, uh, well, I try. Don't get, don't get behind Paul or in front of Paul though. Anyway, so it's, uh, it's, I, it. It really, we've looked at going up the hill, starting there, but I think the traffic calming is our best option. But until that time, we can certainly look at those speed reductions. On that road, at any location. I've kind of laid out this blue line as a, as an indicator. I went a little far to the east. But, uh, somewhat of an indicator of where we'd like to control those speeds through there. And the reason being, one, the school, and like I said, the other, you have the, the school athletic facilities down here. The skate park gets used quite a bit. People walk into it.
Well, uh, my comment on this would be that I really applaud the mayor for, uh, you know. His acknowledgement that, you know, speed is what. Creates fatalities and, and more injuries and. Anywhere that we can make our streets safer.
Bit strong.
Is, uh, it's statistically proven, the higher the speed, the more fatalities and injuries. So.
Only when there's a contact between the car and the person. Because the speed limit on the freeways.
Collisions, whether it's motorists to motorists or.
Just, which, which is my point.
If I just may finish, so my, I would like to say I'm all for moving ahead with the ordinance change and why not? Look at eventually, especially with the new federal program that we're hoping, uh, comes into play in the next year. Which is the safe systems for all approach. That we might be able to get funding to do serious bicycle lanes, which would then encroach on the space that the motorists have. And truly send the signal in their brain that they need to slow down because this is more narrow. Uh, you know, we have to protect the bike lanes and it could really signal to drivers that they need to really. Slow it down. That'll take money and time, but I, I would love to see that, uh, an eventuality, uh, in that way.
Yeah, and, and the component that, that is important to me is, is the school. And I know it's the secondary. But, uh, we have so many people crossing and walking from, uh, the, you know, west or us, north of Bengal. That Butler Hill drives, um. Do we have any idea of what percentage of the pedestrians are school related? If I was going to stab at it, it's going to be very, very, very hot.
Yeah. How, go ahead. Sorry.
Cars killing people is when a car hits a person. Right? So my question to that is. We, just going out and changing a speed limit because you can. Again, as Matt had said, people are going to drive how they feel comfortably. Putting a new sign up on the road, it's not going to really change that.
It could be a first step toward.
It's not, it's, it's not a step though. That's my point. It is, it's, it's. The. Designing the road so that there's. Safe places for the cars, with pedestrians, for bicyclists, that are absolutely good things to have. But thinking that you're going to change the behaviors by putting up a sign. I, I'm sorry, I disagreed with Ma- Mayor Menon Hall's doing that through Salt Lake. It's like what. You're not going to accomplish anything. Yeah, ninety percent, ninety five percent, which I, I would suspect is the number. High school related pedestrians at this location is the issue. The speed limit is already twenty miles an hour at those locations. And so changing it to twenty five doesn't make sense. Um, I, I, I absolutely would applaud coming up, coming up. The street as it, as it closes in there. I would love to see some traffic calming there. That would actually encourage people to do that.
So, so let's get to Councilmember Peterson and Noel, what your thoughts are. Real quick, we don't have a lot of time. We have two, three minutes. I'd mention, no pressure.
I do like the lower, slower speeds because, I mean, people are flying up that hill and down the hill. I see it on a regular basis. I, I think just some visibility. I like the flashing signs because it makes like twenty third. It makes you just think, oh no, I.
I like the radar. People do not like, they see. So I think that's a consensus enough to move ahead to, to, to the ordinance.
It doesn't actually, and I, I mean, I'll, uh, this one, it's, I'm, I'm sorry, that's. We need to change ordinances. We need to make progress and it needs to be based on. Something other than being strictly arbitrary or we like it here or we don't. And that's where I'm having, that's where I have a concern. I, I, I would expect that I probably drive up that hill more than anybody else in this room, including employees. Uh, but I, what I, what I do have an issue with is, is. I just put lipstick, some lipstick on the pig at all. That's the right phrase or not.
I appreciate your opinion, Scott, and it's valid. So I appreciate that. I, I think though that, uh, we're, we're. Did you want to say anything, Doug, about?
One last thing, the light, is that helping? Do we know, is that light helping? I know it's a Band-Aid until we get the other. It is helping.
I actually noticed last night when the light was off, coming home, that the one that's already on the school property. Illuminates the south side of the crosswalk actually really well.
Yeah.
And getting more up there is going to increase that.
Um, we'll have my both.
These are pretty good. I noticed when we're out here, the lighting.
They, they, they work really, really well. But I, I would be seriously interested to find out what the origin. And the reasoning is behind. An ordinance that's restricting changing the speed limit. Because I don't know, I didn't know that that ordinance was there.
Yeah, no.
I have no problem getting rid of it, but if there's some solid reason for it, then I have a, have a problem. Just wiping it out because we. Haven't. We just don't like it.
Councilmember Peterson, did you would, it feels terrible either way.
I, I'm always on the point of safety. Like you, Scott says, it's, it's impact. I have a personal reason for this, but. Uh, kids don't think clearly at this age. They think they're invincible and they do have a tendency. I think something to slow you down when you're coming to this, especially those main crossways. I think it's very important. And I don't know if you change it, you know, when you have a flashing sign, that's not all the time, right? That, that would be variable. I mean, we even have variable speeds going up, you know, Parley's Canyon now, yeah. So obviously, when, when the principal says there is, was extremely near misses within inches. In the dark. But can we change? The natural comfortable speed of what people feel comfortable driving? That is a big question.
Yeah. So let's, let's move up forward with the, the ordinance and then we'll have, at the ability to have more discussion if we want, um, what, what.
There's a basis for the ordinance or not?
Absolutely.
And I mean, it's.
Okay, so let's move on. Item D, Fort Union Stormwater Design. Some, uh, Matt.
Try to cover this fairly quickly. Uh, we have met with Salt Lake City Public Utilities and the Metropolitan Water District. There's a, if you hear this to the right, Salt Lake is getting ready. Well, they, I won't say getting ready, it sounds. Right now, but they will be tearing down this water treatment facility up at the mouth of the canyon and rebuilding it. Uh, in order to do that, to keep water online, they've worked with the Metropolitan Water District. And they will be running a line down Fort Union, a thirty six inch water line to tie in. To this location, which is right here at about Nutree. Um, at this location, they'll be tying into an aqueduct. That Metropolitan will be installing, uh, a large aqueduct that's already running, run parallel. With their existing aqueduct. So they will tie that in so they can keep service to their, uh. Their, uh, customers. Um, now. Some things that are happening along here, this is pushing us up is what I'm saying. For them to put in this thirty six inch water line, there's not a whole lot of room in this road. There's water lines, gas lines. Uh, sewer lines, it, it, this road is filled with utilities. Uh, staff is coming forward to the council to push up our projects on this because we have a need for a storm drain line. Down Fort Union. At this location, we have a thirty six inch line. That we would, we were going to be tying into and we will start it right here at roughly this parking lot. And in this process, we'll design and build a, a storm drain line. That will take care of this, all these neighborhoods through here as well as Fort Union. What's happening right now, and I don't have the exact locate, well, I, I do, if I don't, oh, here it is. We have a storm drain line that goes down this hill right here. You can see it. Um, and it empties into private property across here. The owner of that property has been gracious enough to allow us that until we're able to come in and build a permanent solution. So we would like to move forward so that we can get in before the water line does in our own road. And get our alignment. And during this process, we will build. The storm drain line as well as the curb and gutter on the north side along here. And if you'll recall, we have made a couple of applications for expansion, well, say expansion. For the bike trails along there as well as the, uh, multi-use trail on the north side. Um, my, my guess is the water line is going to work with us on the north side to put that in and. They'll, we'll have some give and take on that, but we'd like to bring forward to you next week, a, uh, contract with a design firm. To design this water line so that we can work with them and have an exact location. Of our line, they can do that as well. The money for this project, although it wasn't budgeted this year. Would come out of the storm drain, uh, in, uh, storm drain utility fee. And we'd have to come back with a budget adjustment at some point in the future. But I think it's important that we get in front of this, uh, project before we get caught behind the eight ball on it.
Limiting what we could then do. Yep, I agree. Okay. Thank you, Matt. I appreciate that.
Well, they worked on. The last couple of years, that was, was that sewer?
Yeah, that was sewer that was coming off of thirtieth.
Okay.
Um, and then coming down all the way to Pippin. Yes.
Not as deep though.
No, this one, yes, will be a four, five foot deep. This is the max depth you really put on the water.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Twenty seconds?
Yes.
I want to, on a different note, but related to Fort Union Boulevard, thank Matt Schiff and his department. I'm getting. Feedback from my constituents who live in the Apple Valley area. They really, really appreciate the do not block. Intersection signs that, uh, your staff printed on the Fort Union Boulevard area that's been so problematic. Because we know we've already had snowstorms and they said it has made a positive, uh, difference. So. Thank you.
I've got similar fe- feedback too. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Councilmember, so the last item, and actually we're going to kind of do a pass on this, but let me tell you a li- a little bit of background. The last one is election options discussion. I'll tell you why I'm going to push this a little bit. I don't even think I've mentioned it this, you so, so, um, um, we, I. We have a consensus to, to move forward with ranked choice voting in a primary and, and still have a general election. Um, so, so there's three for that. However, I'm going to push this. Um, because we were informed by the county this week. That, uh, the cost for the ranked choice voting was underestimated. So they are going to come in with a higher cost than what they've been, we'd been told before. And because cost was a major factor, um, and some people saying why, why we wanted to use ranked choice voting. We're get, that's not going to come out until January. I know we don't have to make a decision until May. It's, we're not going to wait that long, but I do want to have what the actual cost of running a ranked choice voting. Election will be before we actually say, hey, we're going to move forward with that in the primary or, or, um. Anyway, how we're going to do it. So there's not going to be a whole lot of discussion. I just wanted to give you some background.
Well, for clarity, that, um, you, what you mentioned in a conversation with me about doing it for a primary and I. Had to stress that I did not see any point in doing that.
Correct. Correct. And there's two, there's a, there's a, that's a three that would, would do that stuff. So, so that's what, what I'm, I'm, was saying. So anyway, so let's, but we're not going to make that decision now. So we've got more time to talk about it anyway. So let's move on to our, uh. Review of calendars and upcoming events. So we have some future city council meetings in December, uh, next week, the thirteenth. Um, City Hall, let me give you some closure dates. We'll be closed Monday.
Um, City Hall, let me give you some closure dates. We'll be closed Monday, December twenty-sixth in observance for Christmas. Uh, City Hall will be closed Monday, January second, uh, two, two thousand twenty-three for New Year's Day. Uh, City Hall will be closed Monday, January sixteenth for Martin Luther King Day. Uh, the Cottonwood Heights Film Festival, uh, that was approved from the previous council will be held Saturday, January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. At the Butler Middle School Auditorium. Uh, death by chocolate.
That, that's been canceled.
Okay.
We're not going to be doing that.
So we will not be dying. So City Hall will be closed in, in February, Monday, uh, the twentieth. In observance of President State, uh, just some future council meetings into twenty-three, Tuesday, January third and seventeenth. February seventh and twenty-first, March seventh and twenty-first, April fourth and eighteen, May second and sixteen, June sixth and twentieth. July eleventh and eighteenth, August first and fifteen, September fifth and nineteenth. Wow. October third and seventeen, November seventh and twenty-first, December fifth and nineteen. So there you go. So the, the, the days are, are scheduled in for twenty twenty-three and then planning commission. Uh, Wednesday, the January third and eighteenth, February first, March first, April fifth and nineteenth, May third, June seventh. June fifth and nineteenth, August second, September sixth, October fourth and eighteenth, November first and December sixth. So we are, we do have a, a matter to discuss in a closed meeting, uh, concerning property acquisition. So I, could I get a motion to, uh, enter? Into a closed session.
I'll make that motion entering to a closed session.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Great. Sorry. So let's give ourselves about five minutes.